I'm going to call this meeting to order of the North Andover Board of Selectmen for May 8th, 2017. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from open session, April 24th, 2017. Everyone get a chance to read them. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as printed for April 2000.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes for April 24th, 2017. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, communications and announcements. Okay. Lynn is here tonight to give us an update on the budget, the 2017, third quarter of 2017 status of our budget. Good evening.
Allow me to come and present my financials. This is as of March 31st, third quarter. Typically, it's usually a month and a half beyond the quarter, so I make sure that all the numbers are, you know, accurate and posted. Just to start off, just want to let everybody know that collections are doing great again this year. We're way, you know, right on target, if not above target, on several different line items. I'll just pinpoint a couple. Property tax revenue collections are at 73.6 percent compared to the same time last year it was 73.4. So we're right in line with the previous year. Motor vehicle excise tax through the third quarter are running at 91.3 percent. So collections there are great. People are buying cars. Economy's great, you know, everybody's buying new cars. It is down slightly from last year, but I looked at the collections through today and we're already exceeded budget. We're at 4.2 million, 860,000. So we're 286,000 above budget because we budgeted $4 million for the year. So that line item, I mean, we're already exceeded. So and I expect to receive probably another 200 to 300,000 between now and the end of the year. That is a good portion of the 2017 commitment still needs to be collected. So we have a couple more months to collect on that. Mails tax collections are up. They're at 90.8 percent, 6 percent up from last year, which is great. Again, economy's good. People are coming to North Andover and going to the restaurants and eating here. And the mails tax hasn't affected anybody from coming here to eat, which is a good thing. It's been steadily each year going up by small percentages, which is great. Ambulance collections are up slightly. They're at 75.1 percent compared to 72.9 at the same time last year. Building inspection fees are still running strong. They're at 132.3 percent of budget. So they exceeded the budget that we've put in place for this fiscal year. It is down from last year, but as you recall, we had some really large projects last year that skewed the numbers quite a bit. So if we were to back those out from last year's number, the Berry Street development specifically, we would only have been at 66 percent at this point in the fiscal year. So this year, we are running stronger than last year, which again is another indicator things are going well. People are doing developments and building and renovations and things like that. So that's a good thing for North Andover. Interest income collections are continuing to track well. They're at 97.2 percent, which is up from last year, which is interest income. The, we've had a treasurer collector in place for a period of time. We had some turnover last year, so we've been able to focus a little bit on the investments and bringing the interest income up slightly from last year where we didn't do a lot of investing because we had turnover. So overall, looking at the revenues and focusing on the local receipts, when the motor vehicle excise, which is the biggest part of the local receipts, it's 4 million of that, we factor that out, local receipts are at 78.6 percent collected, which is really good. We're doing great. Overall, there's no other issues with revenues. We have a couple line items that haven't collected yet because they collect during specific times during the year, like payment in lieu of taxes are collected in late part of March, beginning of April. Fire alarm box permits are during a certain period of the year, so they haven't come in yet as well. So those will pick back up between now and the end of the fiscal year. Moving on to the expenses, the departmental budgets are running at approximately 75 percent, which is the target for, you know, three quarters of the year. I see no issues. They're all tracking, you know, within what I would expect. As you know, we had some fairly big snowstorms towards the end of the year. We were doing really well on snow and ice, but with these last few storms that did put us into a deficit. We were showing a deficit of about $912,000, which the good news is, is that I'm able to find funds within some surpluses within a few of the other line items and some shared costs and savings that we've had there to cover this deficit. So we won't have to raise it on the tax recap.
That's phenomenal.
Which is one of the, one allowed items that you can raise on the recap sheet if you don't have the funds to cover it. So moving on to the enterprise funds, water revenue collections are at 99 percent of the budget with expenditures running at 79 percent. See no issues at this time with water enterprise fund. Sewer revenue collections are at 84 percent with the expenditures running at 86.6, which is expected because the expenditures are including encumbrances that we have for contracts that take us out to the end of the year. So it shows a little higher percentage of expenditures, but it will not, should not exceed any more than that because we do have the funds encumbered and we'll just draw down on those encumbrances. So they're operating at a normal rate with no, nothing that stands out to me that's an issue right now. Stevens Estate is, their profitability continues to show an improvement that began about four years ago, which is a good thing. Collections are at 60.5 percent with expenditures running at 89.9 percent. We, I'll expect that the revenues will start increasing, the expenditures will slow down a little bit, but we have functions coming up. We'll get more deposits.
Wedding season.
It's a seasonal thing. It's, the calendar for the bookings looks good. The director up there, Joanne O'Leary, is doing a great job helping with some, you know, we're getting some renovations done up there, which is also helping to get additional bookings, which will help in turn make it a much more profitable operation up there. So overall, everything is doing really well. I'm glad to report again, you know, the second, third, fourth year in a row that we've been doing strong collections and keeping everything in line with the expenditures. So it's been, it's been good, you know, doing well right now.
So yeah, a lot of good news and thank you for bringing that to us. Any concerns, any big concerns?
No, I have not.
Anything that we should be looking into or addressing?
Not at the moment, no. Everything has been doing really well. You know, I would have been concerned if I couldn't cover the snow and ice deficit, but I, you know, we plan very well. And, you know, our departments, we work, they work very well with my office and we monitor what they're doing. They're very conservative, mindful of this time of year when we might potentially have to cover a snow and ice deficit. So we're doing well.
Excellent, thank you Lynn. Any questions from the board, comments?
All good.
So just two things you're going to receive in the next less than 30 days in our, what we call the reallocation sheet to move the dolls around to make sure we're covering deficits. Lynn has prepared a draft of that. Upper viewing over the next couple of days needs to be approved by Lynn and by the Board of Selectmen and by the Finance Committee. So we would expect that you're going to see that shortly to allow for the reallocation, make sure the deficits go away. And have previously committed that if these budgets are approved on water and sewer, there would be no recommendation for any change in the water and sewer rates for next fiscal year, which I think is, I don't know, fifth or sixth consecutive fiscal year, would there be no change?
Can I ask you though, has the GLSD raised theirs and we've just been absorbing the increase or?
No.
It really hasn't been, it's been a small increase, so we've been able to manage it. You know, we tend to increase the budget each year by a certain percentage based on conversations with them, but when the final numbers come in, we're usually budgeted a little bit more than what they're actually coming in at.
But that's what we're trying to.
Right, exactly. Because we're trying to be conservative, we want to make sure that we have it covered. Yep.
Has the food waste thing helped with that? Is that kind of saved us from increasing?
Well, they've started the construction line, so we haven't seen the full load of the debt service come through on the, there was, there's three in aerobic digestives on the GLSD site. The proposal was to add a fourth to deal with food waste, which was a change in some of the state and federal regulations. They've started that project, but not, it hasn't gotten to the point that we've seen sort of the trickle down of the debt service component of that. We're about nine, 9.7 percent of the total expenditure, expenditures of the district. So in the big scheme of things, you know, we bear some portion of that and certainly would, it would change our direct cost by the GLSD. It's not necessarily a game changer where we find ourselves currently.
Right.
So even if it would have hit in the next fiscal year, we have enough to make sure we'd absorb that kind of charge and I think we could probably do that for a couple of years. You may recall that we're using 1.2 million dollars of retained earnings in the water system to pay for our capital improvements to the water treatment plant. So we're doing that out of retained earnings and not required to use debt service. That's 50 percent of all of the capital improvements being funded by the water district this year. And 100 percent of the capital improvements being suggested or recommended and supported by this board and the Finance Committee for Sewers being paid out of retained earnings. So we're using, as we promised, we've used some of the profitability to pay for our capital projects without having to borrow money, which in turn reduces expenses and keeps the rates flat.
So this will be the third year in a row that we haven't had to borrow for water and sewer?
Yeah, I think that's.
Which is good because the sewer debt is going down.
Because it's, years past, it wasn't like that.
No, it was, it was high.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
Very happy, very happy. Thank you Lynn.
Excellent.
Coming in. Okay. Any other communications and announcements? What have we got coming up?
I have something to share. I just wanted to communicate that the PTOs for all of the schools have entered into an agreement with Bay State Textiles. So you all might notice the white collection boxes that are on all the school grounds. And that is basically a place where any used textile can be deposited and it will be collected by Bay State Textiles and each PTO will receive money. They pay us, I forget, a percentage, a dollar value per pound that, or per ton that's collected. And that goes straight to the PTO's bottom line and is very helpful to fund things like the model classroom technology that the PTOs are funding in the schools. We pay for the North Andover Enrichment Council activities, which are great things that are brought into K through middle school classrooms to really enrich the learning experience. So that's open to the entire community to bring their stuff, not just the school parents, obviously. And I would just say that's, any textile, they recycle, they have contracts and recycle things. If it's ripped or stained or whatever, it might end up in the cushions of a car or whatever. So they, they really repurpose everything. And we're hoping to make some relatively easy money from that as the PTOs, so.
And that program shouldn't be confused with the curbside pickup.
Correct.
That's also starting on the 15th.
Yes.
Because the curbside pickup does not benefit the schools.
Right.
It goes to the corporate, the company that actually does the curbside pickup. So there's two opportunities now for discarding textiles.
We're going to be driving by a school anyway. Toss your stuff in that bin. It's textile related and.
So take your plasket bag and fill it and then take that and.
All good. The curbside takes all the household goods and everything I noticed, so that'll be great.
Right. And that program starts the 15th, the week of the 15th, correct? Next week?
Yes, thanks for those folks who have, the community would have received bags and an advertisement in the mail last week or this past week. We begin that program on the 15th.
Okay, anything else coming up?
Other than to wish all the moms out there Happy Mother's Day, we do not have a meeting until after that, right? Am I got it right?
I think so, right, yeah.
Mother?
That is correct.
So.
But don't you have your shop to drop program, event coming up?
We do. And it is Thursday, I think we have a meeting, but we'll plug it anyways, Thursday, the 18th. And at the Stevens Estate and it's a great, it's a fun event. Tickets can be bought at the door or you can call any member of the North Andover Women's Club. I'm in the phone book. If you need them delivered, we'll deliver them to you. But it's a really fun event and the proceeds from this will go towards veterans. The North Andover Women's Club, we try to mix it up and it should be a great event. Hope for good weather and even though you'll be indoors or in the tent, it's, it's a good event. So thank you for reminding me.
The North Andover Merchants Association Sports Scholarship fundraiser is at Jamie's on May 20th.
That's right.
So the event actually is from 7 to 10, but a percent of all sales that day, non-bar sales, will go towards supporting the Merchants Association Sports Scholarship Fund, which in turn helps children in our community with limited means have access to all the great sports and athletic programs that we as a community offer, not necessarily through our town, but through the Booster Club. So, May 20th, mark your calendar.
And it's also towards help buying equipment because.
Yes.
Because part of the sports, it's so expensive just to buy the equipment that it, it is, it's a great program. It really, there's no reason that kids cannot play in the town of North Andover.
Started by a former colleague of ours.
I know, and she did a great job with it and I'm sure we'll see her there.
Mr. Chairman, do you want an update on the Merrimack project or you want to do that under time management?
We can do that under time management.
That's great.
One other update, or one other announcement, we do have the sheep sharing coming up on Sunday, May 21st, annual sheep sharing, which is a very fun event that we have on the common. We'll, we do have a meeting, this town meeting between now and then, so we'll make the announcement here.
That's it.
So, May 21st at 10:00 AM on the common, great event, always a lot of fun.
No reason to be bored in North Andover, there's plenty going on.
Okay. So next on the agenda, oh, any other communication announcements? Okay. So we move to consent items. First on the consent items, we have a request from the Borderline Running Club to sponsor once again for the fourth year, the North Andover Fourth of July Road Race.
Our fifth year.
Fifth year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed a year, I was away one year. So the fifth year for the North Andover Fourth of July Road Race, they do a phenomenal job, so.
Yeah, Chris Marshall, representing the Borderline Running Club. This will be our fifth year hosting and producing the event. Thirty-ninth year of the event, I think, if you count back. Much of the information about the event should be in the packet that I sent to Mr. Mailer and yourselves back on the 21st of April, but the Cliff Notes version of it is we expect about 1,000 runners. That's what we've had in the past, the past four years. This will be our fifth year. Kids, 10K runners, 5K runners. We'll be using the same courses that we've used for the past five years. They're US ATF certified courses. I have authored a safety plan, which was a requirement of our underwriter to ensure the event, and gone over that safety plan with Chiefs McCarthy and Gray and gotten that buy-in as well. That's included in your package as well as the insurance policy. Event takes place at 8:00 AM approximately on July 4th and we're clear of the area at approximately 10:30 depending on when the last runner's finish. And as far as traffic disruption, don't anticipate any road closures. We've been able to do some diversions and work creatively with the police department to do that. A combination of police officers out on the course and then we put about 30 to 40 people out on the course as well. So we've got plenty of, plenty of people out there. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions from the board?
Let's go do it.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Do you want to put it in the form of a motion?
All right. I, let's see, how do we say this here? Moved that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Chris Marshall of the Borderline Running Club to hold the Fourth of July Road Races beginning at 7:00 AM at the Town Common as presented.
Motion in a second. Assuming Selectmen Smidely recused herself because of a cough and not for any other reason. So I will move forward with the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? So we'll mark four and one recusal. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. You might as well, are you just going to stay up there for the next one?
Sure, sure. I just want to hand this to Laurie. So yes, the second item is a donation that the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center would like to make towards the 2017 fireworks display. Martha Cassians, who is the president and acting treasurer, asked me to make this donation on her behalf. She's actually out of the country. And as you folks know, the road race is a major contributor to the North, to the North, Friends of the North Andover Senior Center. So asking that you accept the check in the amount of $6,000 towards the Independence Day fireworks 2017.
All right, and.
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of $6,000 from the Friends of North Andover Senior Center to be used towards the Fourth of July fireworks display.
So we have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you as usual. It's, you know, the road race has been just a phenomenal source for the North Andover, Friends of the North Andover Seniors, and you guys have donated over the years so much money to them and so much so that they've been able to donate back to the town for, over the last, what, three years for?
Yeah, this will be our third.
Fireworks?
Yeah. And meant every word of what we said in the letter. I mean, the town's been great, the department's easy to work with, cooperative, and, you know, the festival committee's been wonderful. You know, anything we want, we ask for, we get. And I know this is a big expense for them. We know it's a big expense for them to put on the fireworks display, so we're glad to do it.
And we have a phenomenal fireworks display every year, so, and a lot of that credit to you. And we have some private donors too, or some business donors too, but we have a lot of generous folks in this town that help us pull that off. So we've had a motion in a second, any other further discussion?
No, other than visits, sorry for coughing, but it's such a great event. It's fun just to even cheer the runners on, so even if you don't run, just go and cheer them as they come through the finish line. It's great fun. You guys do great work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set. Thank you, everyone, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have acceptance of grants. We have three grants since we have become, we have gotten our designation of a green community. We have gotten three grants through that program. Mr. Manager, would you like to speak to them?
Sure. As we've brought up at previous meetings, there's several different green initiatives that we have applied for, programs we've applied for. Those all have come with funding. We've mentioned them at previous meetings, but certainly we're recommending that the Board accept these grants. The first is the Green Communities Grant in the amount of $169,390. The second is the Mass EVIP Grant, which is specifically to electric vehicles in the amount of $15,000. And the third is the MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission's Streetlight Rapid retrofit grant, which would go toward changing our streetlights from standard incandescent lighting to LED lighting. That grant has an amount of, a really specific sum of $100,087.95. So in combination, these three grants represent close to $300,000 in various green initiatives. Specifically, the LED Streetlight Initiative is something that we'd be looking at over the next 12 to 18 months. We're looking at other funding sources to move forward with that program. It would cost about 400,000, of which the grant is 100,000 of that, there's some rebates involved, probably likely some town funding. But on, as a return, we'd get an alternative tariff or an alternative rate. Currently spend about 150,000 in streetlight costs. Payback on that program would be three years or less. And after that point, again, we'd be saving, as we have with the streetlights themselves, significant amount of money, probably close to $1 million over the subsequent 20 years after that period. And would end up with a better product light, wouldn't need as much maintenance, obviously better visibility. Specifically to the Green Communities Grant, there's three programs we're focusing with that. One is to help support also the green, the electric vehicle initiative. Part of that is going to making some retrofits that were not part of the ESCO program in two of the school buildings to reduce energy consumption in the schools. That's a recommendation of Steve Foster. And part of that funding as well will go toward the streetlight program. Specifically, the Mass EVIP program can only be dedicated toward electric vehicles. And so what that program will do, it'll pay $7,500 toward the cost of the installation of an electric vehicle charging station back here in Town Hall and the remaining $7,500 Town Hall parking lot. And the $7,500 that isn't going for that would go toward the cost of an electric vehicle. The balance of the cost of the electric vehicle, somewhere around $30,000, will be picked up by the Green Communities Grant. So we'd be adding to our fleet an electric vehicle, which would be used by our Inspection Services Department that has, you know, it's sort of an appropriate use, quite frankly, given the nature of the, what they do and the fact that quite, the amount of miles they put on those vehicles is not excessive. So gives us an opportunity to start down the road of using electric vehicles when are appropriate and the opportunity to take advantage of the grant funding that's been available. So we're very fortunate, nearly $300,000 in grant funding in the last two months, probably more than we've historically received during any couple of month period in our, in our history. So very positive. Person at the center of that, all of these grants has been Laurie Berziloff. She's been involved in writing the grants and spearheading making sure we get them. So she deserves 98 percent of all of the credit. We'll allocate the other 2 percent across the board, but Laurie's done a fantastic job.
I think the cash should go to the conservation agent.
That'll be one of, we'd like to, we'd like to rotate vehicles, but yes, that would be one of the, one of the departments that would be using it, yes.
So again, a lot of good news and also this grant and the designation is a direct result of a vote that was taken at town meeting last year.
Yes.
So there was one or two, one hurdle left to get those, those building codes in place and that required a vote of town meeting. So the town people get some credit too for this.
Absolutely.
For having that vision and having, you know, the desire to get to us to a green community. So Laurie, 98 percent, thank you so much. The rest of the town, thank you for supporting the program and getting us there. And now we can truly see the fruits of that, that vote and in $300,000, almost $300,000 worth of grants. So great, great news from everyone, for everyone. So do I have a motion?
So who?
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a, an appointment to our Youth and Recreation Council, Daniel Moore. Mr. Collier, would you like to speak to this one?
So Selectmen Smidely and I sat down with Daniel prior to last meeting. He was interested in joining the Youth and Rec Council. He did his due diligence and reached out to the chairman, sat with the chairman. The chairman's really excited about the possibility of Daniel joining. Currently involved in youth sports, really involved in basketball, really seems like a nice guy, so.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any, if I missed anything.
No problem.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we have a request from Anant Shah, Eagle Scout candidate, to build a pergola at the Stevens Estate. Is Anant here or someone for Anant? No? Okay. Let's take a look at it then. I'm sure it's a very well planned out project.
I think this originally came before you as a gazebo. And the gazebo has been.
Changed.
Down, not downsized, but.
So this is better.
Right, this was, but this was probably more practical, given the level of labor that would be required to construct the gazebo. I think that was one of the comments made by the Board at the time that this was pretty heavy lifting.
It was an ambitious project.
And so.
It was an ambitious project.
Yes. I think this would be a nice project.
And Joanna at the Stevens Estate, Joanna O'Leary is still very much supportive of this project. So do we have a motion?
I would want to accept the Eagle project of, where is his name? Anant Shah.
Anant Shah.
Thank you. As a substitution from his original project, I think it's great. I think the picture is beautiful and will be a great asset to Stevens Estate.
Second.
Any discussion? As I recall, Anant was only 14, so he had plenty of time to get this done, so...
I'll make him go back to the gazebo.
Yeah.
He can do two.
He had plenty of time, so, Anant, thank you very much, and good luck with this, so, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to review Article 11 and Article 9 on, from this coming town meeting. If we recall, when we reviewed these warrant articles in, not the last meeting, but the meeting prior to that, we didn't have at that time the decision from the planning Board, or our analysis from the legal council, from our legal council, on these articles, so at that time, the Board decided to, I believe, take no action on those articles at that time. So, tonight, we are taking those articles up again, as we've gotten some way in from both the planning Board and from our town council, so we are going to take those articles up again tonight for a potential vote, one way or the other. We'll give you the petition as an opportunity to give us an update on the project, and way, you know, how it's progressed over the last few weeks. I'll ask you to keep your comments somewhat, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, and, and then, you know, take some questions from the Board, and we'll go from there, so...
Great. So, I have, I have some prepared remarks that I'd like to, to give to the Board.
We all know who you are, but could you introduce yourself so that our viewing public...
Yep. My name's Tom Lee, I'm a resident of 96 Woodcrest Drive in North Andover, and I filed the citizen petition for warrants articles nine and 11. I first presented this project to the Board, to this Board, back on February 13th, it was the beginning of what has become an extremely positive and collaborative process between the Osgood Project's key stakeholders in the town of North Andover. We have worked closely with this Board, Andrew Mailer, Eric Fori, Jan Enright, and Suzanne Egan, to ensure that everything that we are proposing regarding 1600 Osgood Street is being developed in good faith by people who have the best interest of our town at heart. The owners of 1600 Osgood Street are not going to sell marijuana in North Andover. The owners have zero interest in opening a marijuana dispensary in our town. This is a critical point that is addressed in warrant article number nine. With that said, as an extra layer of reassurance, we are more than happy to add this as a guarantee in our host community agreement. This project is not being developed by some speculator from Boston or New York, looking to come to North Andover to break into the marijuana gold rush. The Osgood Landing Biotechnology Campus is the vision of a renowned radiation oncologist and a longtime North Andover resident. Jeff Goldstein, who joins me here tonight, approaches this development as a doctor who has seen firsthand the life-changing benefits that medical cannabis has to offer. He has seen the relief in the faces of his patients, who now have an effective way to control pain, nausea, and sleeplessness associated with the horrible radiation treatments they must endure to fight cancer. What's more, these patients no longer must endure the whole host of side effects associated with the opioids they were forced to use before. Scientists at the National Institutes of Health believe the compounds found in the cannabis plant could alleviate dozens of illnesses, including schizophrenia, diabetes, Crohn's disease, graft versus host disease, multiple sclerosis, and cancer, among others. Dr. Goldstein wants to build a world-class research and development center here in North Andover, that is committed to cultivating and researching the cannabis plant. The Osgood Landing Biotechnology Campus will include companies from across the globe, companies like Dutch horticultural leader Hoken, which will focus on horticultural innovation, Israeli Research Hospital Sheba Medical Center, in collaboration with Technion Israel Institute of Technology, which will focus on medical research and development, and the manufacturing of pharmaceutical products for the cannabis, with cannabis compounds. And finally, Lumira DX, a London-based medical device and diagnostics company, which will focus on developing and manufacturing a rapid drug testing device for police officers to identify accurate cannabis impairment for enforcing OUI laws. The campus will also seek to foster innovation through the addition of an incubator for cannabis-related startup companies. There are companies from across the globe chomping at the bit to be part of this campus, many of them looking to open their US operations right here in North Andover. The owners already have a dozen letters of interest from well-respected international companies like Philips Lighting, and there are a dozen others waiting anxiously for this impending zoning approval. The simple fact of the matter is that there is no property in Massachusetts more perfectly suited for this purpose. The cost of entry for these companies is a fraction of what they would have to pay to fit out an old mill building, or build from the ground up. First, with a dedicated sewer main, a 50-megawatt electrical substation, and a groundwater pumping station that can draw hundreds of thousands of gallons of water a day from multiple onsite wells, the property was designed to be entirely independent of the town's infrastructure. Second, Lewson Technologies spent hundreds of millions of dollars to install a state-of-the-art HVAC and electrical bus bar system that can easily be adapted to accommodate modern indoor horticultural systems. We, as a community, have a unique opportunity here to allow the owners of this landmark property to pursue a development that could change the economic future of our town for generations to come. So, what exactly are you, as a Board, being asked to endorse? You are not being asked to give a blanket approval of this project. By voting yes on warrant articles nine, 10, and 11 at town meeting next Tuesday, voters are simply giving the owners and the town an opportunity to move forward with the process, a process that will include extensive local and state applications, approvals, and oversight. As you know, there are layers of checks and balances that the owners must go through before they come close to receiving final approval for this project, and once they do receive those approvals, the state tightly regulates the industry. If the town votes no, well, this will come to a screeching halt. The town won't have the opportunity for any due diligence, will pass up the opportunity to develop a biotechnology campus that we can be proud of, because all the companies interested in coming to North Andover will go elsewhere. Most critically, we are effective, we would effectively squander the possibility of securing millions of dollars per year for our town. Is there a leap of faith involved here? Sure there is, but what bold visionary idea doesn't require a touch of faith? Give Dr. Goldstein the opportunity to pursue the possibility of returning 1600 Osgood Street to its former glory as a world-class manufacturing and research facility, a facility we can all be proud of again, the economic driver that this town has been missing for over a decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the Board at this point? Quiet. I haven't seen this Board so quiet.
Well, I think there's a, I think the, the question here is, there are technicalities and there are optics with this. The technicalities, though, are very critical, as, as Town Council Egan has said, this is primarily a zoning issue that's in front of us here, but yet, the, every wording, every word in that is critical to what could or could not be done, what the interpretations are in the future, and we're all sitting here, you know, agreeing, saying, okay, this is what you're proposing, but we don't know what that's going to bring us. And the wording that's in these warrants is problematic, as I think we've all discussed here, and I don't really know how, how to resolve that within the confines of the warrant and town meeting, and so I guess I'm saying to my peers here, you know, how do we have a discussion about this, but yet, we're literally bound within the wording as submitted?
We are, so, tonight, if we choose to vote one way or the other on these articles, we are obligated to vote based on the wording that's currently in the warrant article, because that's what we are going forward with for town meeting. Now, I understand there may be some amendments made to those on the floor of town meeting, but we have to focus tonight on what we have in front of us in the warrant article, because that's really what we're voting to approve, or not approve, or otherwise, take no action, or however we chose to move forward, but we have to take up what's currently printed in the, in the warrant article. So, I think, you know, we've received some comments from our internal council that, that does indicate that there are some parts of the Article 9 that are written that are not clear, and could open the town up to lawsuits or interpretations that may not be favorable to us. So, that's a concern of mine, is that, you know, if, if we were to vote to approve tonight Article 9 as favorable, that would open the town up to some possibilities for lawsuits going forward, because of the ambiguities in, in that article. So, to me, the way, as the article is written, I don't know that I can, well, we'll talk about that later, but I think the way the article is written, it makes it difficult to put the town in a position where we knowingly could face some litigation going forward that may not be favorable for us, so, that's one concern that I have with Article 9. Does anybody...
Excuse me, are we focusing on Article 9 and then 11, or are we kind of talking about these together in this discussion?
We can certainly talk about them together, but we'll vote them separately.
Okay, I think it's probably fruitful to do that, to kind of talk them within the same...
Just for the public's benefit, Article 9 is the zoning language proposed, Article 10 is the host agreement language, which has previously been approved by this Board, voted favorable action, and Article 11 is the zoning map that accompanies the zoning change.
Thank you.
Now, is it, is it possible for us to, I mean, we've been, since, since I submitted these petitions, and since these warrants, since before the warrants were officially published, we have, we have looked to work with the town to, to, to get the language to where everyone feels comfortable, and, and that's still where we stand, that's still our, our mindset, and, you know, for us, it's, it's important for there not to be any loopholes, or any concerns with lawsuits, and everything that you mentioned, you know, for us, it was, it was, it was creating a situation that would move the existing medical marijuana overlay district to encompass the existing property that my client owns.
And that's Article 11, that one, what you just spoke about, increasing that overlay district is actually Article 11.
Right, and then nine, but nine would effectively increase the size of a, of a facility within the MMOD, because right now, our cap's at 20,000 square feet, and this facility is a little over a million, so...
But in addition to that, I mean, I understand that, but in addition to that, it has some side ramifications that we've been advised on, that could potentially open us up to some issues up the road, on Holt Road, where we have currently an adult entertainment district that could be also, you know, it has other ramifications of the way it's currently worded in the, in the warrant, and that, that's part of my concern.
Right, and I, and I think, and I, I appreciate that, and I think what I'm trying to say is, we're willing to fix it, however we need to fix it, and we're willing to present those amended, that amended Article 9 at town meeting, we can, we can give it to the town moderator ahead of time, and, and he has the ability to, to put a redlined warrant article up there when we make that motion, and we have the, we can have the two, and we can bring it up, and that's our...
Absolutely, you have that right to do that.
But that's our intention.
Yeah, and you have that absolute right to do that. My concern is, as I stated earlier, we still need to vote on what's presented to us tonight, that, that's my opinion, we're voting on what's presented to us tonight. I appreciate that you can do that, and I think it would probably be wise to do that, but that doesn't change what we have in front of us tonight. We can't, in my opinion, we can't vote on what's going to be presented, we have to vote on what is presented to us now.
Because it makes it appear, though, that we're signing on as to what is in front of us and not, that's okay.
I'm sorry, sorry.
No, did you need to confirm?
No, I think, I think Jeff is, is, is wondering if we could, if there was a way to, to solve these potential language issues in the warrant articles between now and for the Board to potentially hold off until Monday to make, to take the vote on support.
The Board technically would not, does not have to take a vote on this position, and so, it doesn't have to recommend favorable or unfavorable action, if the intent is to introduce edits or amendments to this. I mean, I actually had one follow-up conversation, one follow-up question for our town council, because there was a section in her analysis that wasn't so much about getting the site developed, but it was about the process you'd have to follow, and it was Section E in your analysis, Suzanne, or Part E, and it was Section 8, 81263C, where it says that it would effectively flip the process that an applicant would have to follow, so basically, they'd start with the planning, well, I guess, actually, I don't, I'd like, if you wouldn't mind explaining it, because it seems to me that it would start with the planning Board, should this article pass, as opposed to starting with us.
Yes, so this was, this issue was discussed at the planning Board hearing, when they reviewed this proposed amendment. As the zoning bylaw states now, the portions that are submitted as a part of that special permit application include the registration as issued by the state. And so, that is issued after the Board of Selectmen review the application and issue a letter of non-opposition, and that, and that's the state reviews that entire packet, gives the registration, and then it would go to the planning Board for the special permit application. And so, what the proposed amendment is, is all the applicant would do is file an application of intent to do the filing, to present it to the Board of Selectmen, to also put together an application for the registration, and then it goes to the planning Board. So, it'd be the planning Board reviewing the project before the Board of Selectmen reviewed it, and before the state issued that registration.
So, that was a section that stood out to me, because I feel like it's a lost opportunity, both for you and for us, I mean, as elected officials, I think that the community puts us in this role to weigh in on issues such as that, and I think it would be unfortunate for you as applicants down the road to go before the planning Board, only to then make your way through the process, to then come before us and see that our feedback isn't consistent with the direction you've been going in.
Yeah.
So, that was language that, for me, because I really want to see that site succeed, I really want to see, you know, this, this property blossom, I think you've done a really, you've put a lot of effort into getting out to the community and giving them information on this, but the chairman makes an important point, which is, if we did choose to vote favorable action, at least this is where I'm coming from, it would be to endorse this component, which would really change and perhaps diminish our role in the process, and create more confusion for you as applicants down the road, perhaps something to be attentive to, and, and address with an amendment at town meeting.
And that's, yeah, and that's, I mean, things like that, to get that kind of feedback is invaluable for us, and, and again, we're willing to, we're willing to do, to modify these warrants in, in, in a way that everybody's comfortable, and ultimately, that's what we want, and it's a shame that the process is such that we couldn't have done that beforehand, but...
So, we can talk to that just a bit, not specifically the article, so, again, more for public edification, the two articles do two different things. We have an existing MOD, we have an existing district defined for medical marijuana, public should know that, it was adopted a couple of years ago, it's on Holt Road, it's a couple parcels on Holt Road, and that bylaw passed, town meeting's approval actually was crafted by the planning Board and approved. Article 11, the map, expands that district to include 1600 Osgood, so, for the folks, I know this folks, but for the folks at home, the folks watching, that's what Article 11 does, it, it expands the Polk Road District to include Osgood. Article 9 then suggests, offers, to offer the bylaw that was approved previously by town meeting to include different language that was, then currently exists, I assume, I will make a presumption, to accommodate the kinds of uses that Mr. Goldstein has identified to, from, from their perspective. When citizen petitions are filed, what we typically don't want to do is to intend to understand exactly what the applicant wants, and then write the bylaw and say, well, this one will work for your purpose, because then it puts us in the role of being, in essence, the de facto applicant, so, we certainly can provide you all of the feedback, it's similar to the feedback you would have heard with the planning Board, what becomes a challenge is, although everybody, if there's an interest to want to, to, to come, get to a certain outcome, the challenge is, we don't want to stand in your place and rewrite the bylaw the way you may want it to be, because then we become the de facto applicant, and that, governments don't want to be in the position of doing that.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, and I think, I think, I think what we're saying is, or what I'm saying is, to get the feedback of where the concerns are, and that's all I'm saying, is that, so for town council to give us her concerns, the same, and I'd love to see that letter, you mentioned the letter that went out, is, do we have a copy of that that I can see?
It's up to the Board, the Board has been provided a legal analysis, and I see no reason why it can't be released.
That's a public document, you certainly can have it.
Okay. Yeah, because that would be helpful for us, but, but, so ultimately, you know, to get the feedback, not to ask the town to rewrite the warrant article, but to get the feedback so then we could rewrite the warrant article in a way that we know the town would be comfortable, so, it would, to get that feedback would be very helpful.
Yeah, and let me clarify my position too, I'm excited about the opportunity that, that we're, we're seeing up there, and I, and I've read all the letters that were submitted from the various companies and the collaborators, and I, and I think that's phenomenal, and I'm, I'm real excited to see something going on up there that is positive, and has, you know, benefit to, to a lot of people potentially, and also to bring in these other innovative companies that are willing to work with you and to do different research, and, and to really, you know, bring that campus back up to what it was at one point, so, it's an exciting opportunity to me, but, on the other hand, with the way this is written, I also need to ensure that, you know, I do, do my due diligence to protect the town, that's why I'm sitting here.
Yeah, to clarify my position, I feel the same, I, I think everything that you've described...
I think everything that you've described in the vision is very exciting, I would love to see that campus be exactly what you described, but I agree with the concerns that are raised in this zoning change. One thing specifically I wanted to mention is, in 8124 definitions, where you define a new term, medical marijuana facility, and then say what it is and what it is not intended to be, to me, that section was very confusing, I'm not really sure what you're getting at there, so I'm sure, we'll share the memo with you, and you'll see what town council has had to say about it, but I, for me, that part was very confusing, and I'm not sure what you're trying to get at, so I just wanted.
The intention of that was just to clarify, sorry.
No, please.
No, it was just, it was to clarify that, basically, there's opportunities with the federal government through, there's an RFP that's been put out by the federal government to conduct research on marijuana, and that was, it was independent of state regulations. So, that was, that was in an attempt to clarify that.
Would that be, wouldn't that be allowed anyway without this, or you're saying this, you're, in your estimation, that this language allows that?
Yeah, yeah, it would allow both, and that was, that was the intent. But again, it's, if it's, if it's of major concern, that's something that we would be willing to go back and look at.
The feedback that I'm getting from the citizens of North Andover is that they're, they're totally confused by this article, and that troubles them greatly, they just see it as all over the place, they can't quite figure it out. And I think that the calls that have been going around have been, kind of led to that confusion. The call spoke of, and the town will be receiving, you know, $3 million in benefits, but I think it didn't clearly lay out when and how we would reach that number. That's, from my understanding, fully built out, and that's not going to happen right away, and that's not mentioned in the discussion, and it concerns me, because I think, I don't believe you intended to do this, but it gives a perception that, yes, if you vote for this, we're all going to get $3 million more dollars, and that's really not true at this stage. The other concern that I personally have, and most of the people that speak to me, is the recreational piece. The phone calls spoke highly of the medicinal, the research, I think I've stated this a few times, that I like the research in the equipment that would see the level of, under the influence, for lack of a better word, I think that has universal appeal, you know, all over the planet, is that law enforcement needs this for a whole host of reasons. I'm excited about that, if it's truly a true pharmaceutical facility, but I think the questions that most people have in concern is the big, really probably bigger than the pharmaceutical, is the recreational. I'm pleased that you don't want a dispensary in our town, but that's, that's the concern that I have. I, and I really wish we could clarify on the record, and is that $3 million piece, because I don't think people, they're like, what are they talking, $3 million? I said, no, it's not really quite $3 million at the beginning.
We've tried to be clear in saying that that's a potential, that's the potential to be over $3 million.
Yeah, I got the calls too, I actually got a couple of them, and quizzed, and I think they were trying, I don't think that anyone was deliberately trying to mislead, I did not get that impression, but I think it should have been made a little bit more clear, because that's a big carrot, and we're not anywhere near that, so it's somewhat troubling.
I agree, I think, but I think it's a tough thing, I think it's tough to explain, because there are, this is an option, right down the road.
It's complicated.
Because even how it was explained, actually, just, I was thinking about how, Mr. Town Manager, how you were explaining Article 10, that just gives us the authority to go in and negotiate a host community agreement, it doesn't approve a host community agreement. So, it literally starts the process where we might get to the $3 million mark, so it is, it's definitely, I agree with selectmen's, but it's tougher to explain it to folks, and it's been, I think, tougher to follow, just in the press, unless you're watching these meetings, you know, every second, but I appreciate the efforts that you've done, and to try to explain it, because those have been questions, when I've been asked about it, is, do we get the money, or is it not getting the money? And I said, that's several steps down the road, so.
Right. I, like my fellow board members, I really think I could get very excited about a major pharmaceutical campus that helps people get better, or relieve terrible symptoms, or pain relief. I think everybody knows that we need better pain-relief methods than the opioids, if at all possible, but it's the recreational, and that's a big piece.
The law that was passed in November, and the reason all these companies are...
Can you speak up just a little bit, Jeff, because he's a fan, I'm sorry.
The, if I may clarify a point, the law that was passed, the current medical law is not an R and D law, it has approved uses for patients. You can grow, and that grow has to translate and move directly to a patient. So, if one wishes to divert cannabis, say, to study and learn about a new use for patients, and wants to give it to a mouse, not allowed under the existing medical law, it's not an R and D law. So, the use that came in, that was approved in November, was not a recreational, recreational was part of that, but it was an adult use, an over-21 use. So, when we refer to these uses, the things and the companies coming to us, for example, there's several companies interested in doing impairment research, and Chief Gray has been engaging with them, and I think partially, some of their reasons for wanting to come here has been his enthusiasm and his very good articulation of the problems that the police have.
Right.
We're all aware of it.
Right.
You know, the legislature moved the law in, but didn't really give the police all the authority they need. And, you know, Chief Gray is the one who made me aware of this, and, you know, I had him on the line unclear. So, we went out and engaged in several different groups and companies that are actually looking for non-invasive ways within the scope of the Massachusetts law to address some of these problems. But their ability to do research, all is under the over-21 law, not the, or the recreational law, not the medical. So, the way the laws work is, once one has the medical, one can then apply for the over-21 and engage in this research. So, understand what you say, some of the even pharmaceutical companies that want to come in and research new uses, it's under the adult use. You know, there's a fine line sometimes, is an aspirin a medicine or an adult use? It used to be, you know, we can think of numerous drugs that used to be prescription-based, and then moved into non-prescription. Many of the medical uses of cannabis are not psychoactive, they have no intoxicating effect, and many of the uses for pain, and for autoimmune diseases, inflammatory diseases, the effects are actually not that it makes you out of it, but in fact, it has a very potent anti-inflammatory effect that reduces inflammation and reduces pain as a result. So, I think that many of these uses could potentially be approved over the counter eventually one day, in terms of plant products. Does that make them medical or pharmaceutical, adult use? I think the term used is over-21, not all uses are recreational. In Colorado, as we saw from the, the, the business plan sent to the town, I think a substantial part of the Colorado market is under the medical, under their medical jurisdiction and medical bylaws, rather than, and many of the patients and users in Colorado are falling and buying at medical dispensaries rather than adult use or recreational dispensaries. Still a very, very substantial market. Our site, if we were to mirror Colorado for the state of Massachusetts, would only, at best, according to the projections you were given, and you had the opportunity to review, would still only account for 25% of that total market for this, for our state. So, how quickly can this get built out? I don't know. I can tell you that the calls are coming in, you know, faster than I can answer them, and everybody wants a call back on May 17th. I don't know where to start. Whether it be a very large dermatology practice, they have offices here in town, talking to us now about collaborating with Sheba, filing DEA applications, or, you know, it's, this is probably one of the most dynamic industries in the world, not country or state even. Massachusetts has a natural attraction from so many of these because of our research infrastructure, our hospitals, our institutions, it's exciting, everybody wants to be here. And what we have is very unique, a corporate campus, that is just, nobody else has that. It's really in a very nice position where we'll be able to select among the best. Question is, is how long are these people going to wait? So, what I'd like to be able to do, is there another board of selectmen meeting on next Monday, prior to town meeting? You guys don't?
It's actually right before town meeting, on May 16.
We meet in the building before town meeting starts.
Six o'clock? What we would very much like the opportunity, I think, is rather than taking a vote tonight, we've always been very, you know, some of this is a bit of a whack-a-mole, you know, we were trying to get the language right, so that the selectmen are happy, and that the planning board was happy, and we keep coming back and back, and new issues are always arising. So, we're very open to this. So, for example, the, you know, we've been very, very open to working and negotiating, you know, with the town administration, with the board, and the various boards, to try to create a document that gets us all what we want.
And Dr. Goldstein, we appreciate that, and we understand that you've been working very diligently with us and the town. The problem is that we have to, we still, the amendment can't be made until town meeting is opened. So, even before our meeting, even the meeting that we have before, we can't vote on an amendment that hasn't been presented at, on the town, on the floor of town meeting. All we can do is look at what is currently published, and then when the town meeting opens up, you or your petitioner certainly have a right to make an amendment to that article on the floor, and then that would be, you know, how we would vote on that. But we can't even look at it, we can't vote on it before, because it really is not what's been published.
And that's our, that's our intent, our intent will be to, will to be offer, offer a document at town meeting that will be amended to the point where we feel like the town in North Andover would be happy with it.
Tom, can I, so, Dr. Goldstein, and Tom, you both have been very accommodating, and I think that nobody, in the public, I don't think anybody in this board would say that you weren't, you weren't willing to bend over backwards to try to make this work, so that we can meet in the middle. As I see it, so the map we have to accept, but is the only real obstacle at this point for development of the site, the limitation of the 20,000 square feet? Is that, would you say that's the serious obstacle with the current bylaw?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? How come you hadn't just proposed amending that number, so that instead of 20,000, it was 200,000 or 1 million?
2 million.
How come, I mean, that would have kept it simple, and so that's why I'm concerned, I have no problem admitting, I'm concerned, because I feel like I must be missing something, there must be some other problem we're trying to address, given all the added language.
So, the sage is 1.8 square feet.
Yes, all right.
Yeah, but to your point, I... I wish, I wish, I wish I knew then what I know now.
But do you feel, can I ask, do you feel that that simple change would address what obstacles exist outside?
Part of it is, you know, and even more yet, we're having so many calls, I'm wondering if we have enough space to fit everybody.
So, that's a great problem to have, but so you're missing, this is my question, though, all that other language, is all that other language necessary?
Most of it is, most of it was really, you know, repeated attempts at clarification, we've been coming back and back, you know, to various boards, but, so, we're willing to be very flexible on...
So hypothetically, at town meeting, you could come and say, you know, we'd like to amend Article 11, so that it simply says, change 20,000 to 1 million. Excuse me, I'm sorry, yes, Article 11 is the map, excuse me.
Yes, absolutely.
And that would, perhaps address, I mean, that would make everything very simple for you at town meeting, and us, and communicating to the public, because I think the rest of this has obviously been a distraction, right?
It's almost manufactured.
I have a question about the 8121, the use of, changing or to and to say that something can, that the space can be used for an R and D or the underlying zone, is how it currently is, it's what the current bylaw says. You've proposed to change it to and, is that and required, and maybe this is a question for Attorney Egan as well, is that and required for you to do your research part of the vision as well as the cultivation? I mean, is that why you put the and?
I'll let Mr. Goldstein's attorney answer.
For two reasons.
Can you please state, state your name for the...
Michael Rosen, counsel for the applicant. Two reasons. Number one, it's necessary for the research and development. Number two, it's a 1.8, 1.9 million square foot facility. While we hope that we would fill the entire thing with research development in the cannabis-related center campus, we're hoping to do, we still have 600,000, 500,000 square feet of tenants that are already in there, one of them might look to expand, many of them might look to stay, and we have a very large building where we might have the opportunity to bring in temporary tenants to use part of the space, as this research and development center is growing, and we're trying to get it off the ground. If it says one or the other, then basically, the day town meeting is over, as soon as they file their first application for an R and D, they cannot put any other tenant in the building. They can't expand uses, they can't use any other space for anything else, and you are basically saying it's an all or nothing proposition.
Would you be forced to evict, so you said they can't expand, but would you be forced to evict the existing tenants?
No, we would not be forced to evict any tenants, they would be pre-existing, non-conforming uses, I believe that they would be allowed to stay for the remainder of their term, and I believe they probably would even be able to extend their term without any limitation or restriction.
Unless there's a conflicting use to the marijuana.
Exactly, yes, unless it's a conflicting use, but again, again, answering Ms. Keen's question, I think there were two reasons. One is that research and development does not fall under the MMOD, under Massachusetts law, so if you elected an MMOD as a matter of law, you wouldn't then be applicable under the underlying I-2 or Osgood R and D provision. So, and I guess tangentially, to the extent somebody wanted to manufacture horticultural lighting in that building, that would be an I-2 or an Osgood manufacturing use, not a cannabis use. So, if Philips Lighting wants to come in, they're a manufacturer, they're potentially research and development, but more likely industrial manufacturing, it's within the industry, but they're clearly not an MMOD use. So, there was a purpose, you know...
So, I couldn't too distracted that, though, just to follow Mr. DeColigero's comment, hasn't the zoning board already opined on your ability to move in and out of the Osgood to the underlying, under the existing zoning?
Under the, under the Osgood, by and between the Osgood and the underlying.
Correct.
And there was an argument made at the time when we went before the zoning board, that because they allowed us to go back and forth several times between those two districts, that they couldn't then prohibit that conduct with respect to a particularized portion of the property. But because this was a new bylaw on dealing with a new overlay district, we thought, rather than have to worry about going back to the zoning board of appeals, we would be clear and obvious in what our intent was, stated upfront, not try and mislead anybody as to what we were doing, and, again, to answer Ms. Keen's question, that's exactly why we put it in, to make it clear that potentially, we would have not only MMOD, but non-MMOD uses in the same building.
I think just to broaden our overall point, but we're sort of getting to the point, and this isn't specifically a proposal, we're getting to the point that, why don't we just sort of scratch zoning and leave no reference? Because in this case, we'd be doing underlying overlay, overlay, like, where, it's a little bit, where does it end? And I think that's where the indoor question comes in a little bit. Well, if this use doesn't work, and now there's a new proposal, three for us now, we'll add another overlay, there's a point at which sort of that stacking has the tendency to leave people confused on what the vision of the property is in the long term. I think that's more just sort of editorial feedback than it is zoning.
And you laid a great, a great vision, and I think that you see a room full of people willing to all work together. What would be the harm in, again, proposing a simple amendment to where it's just the number that's adjusted, and then waiting 12 months before the next town meeting, so you perfect the language, instead of us having to do this patchwork? Because then that means you can compete, at a time that we're being told it's so critical to get these, these folks, but then, I mean, I'm certainly open, I mean, I just don't want to see this derailed because of this, like, for instance, for... I mean, I just don't want to see this derailed because of this, like, for instance, for me, the language that really sticks out to me has everything to do with just the order of how things are going to move. So why, why wouldn't we want to kick it 12 months?
We actually, this industry, see, we're not trying to sell broccoli or cauliflower-flavored soda. This is an industry that already exists, is going from and transitioning very rapidly from-
You're kind of making the argument for me right now, you know?
From illegal to legal, from unregulated to regulated, untaxed to taxed, no obvious use to use. Massachusetts is a very, very attractive location. And these companies are coming here very quickly, they're citing, there's a million square feet down in Free Town that was permitted with, you know, opportunity to grow beyond that. The concerns we have is the companies that are here and with us now may not be here a year from now. And what I'm concerned about is that I have a million nine feet, so by asking me to put a limitation on it, you're saying to me, leave 900,000 feet empty. You know?
I don't think that's what you're saying.
I'm asking, I want to be able to say, I don't know, I personally, I would like to be able to go to town meeting and say, that amendment's a great idea because we'd be expanding the square footage. But there's all this extra language-
Yes.
-that allows you to take advantage of every opportunity, every type of business. So I'm saying, why couldn't we go with this very simple amendment, which would be easy for town meeting and us and the board and the public at large to digest, which is just expand the number? You pick the number, that works for your business. And then leave all that other language out so that we can actually put our time into ironing out those details, which there seems to be quite a few details that don't jive with this board, for instance.
You know, the-
So why couldn't we wait until next year's town meeting or a special town meeting?
I think based on Ms. Keen's point, perhaps we can take two minutes and talk about it, but I think with two changes, because we do still need to be able to have RMD and we need the potential tenants that would be coming for RMD to know that they could come in without being, having to have an MMOD license, which they wouldn't qualify for. So with that change and a square footage change and maybe gutting everything out, that might actually work.
So we could reduce this substantial article to perhaps just two sentences and we might be able to-
So, does it make sense to have a working session tomorrow with a representative of this board and town council and see if we can get it done?
I mean, I think that, I think that we're communicating in a public meeting right now. What, I communicated my desires, I don't want to, we didn't vote for anything. I communicated something, I have no idea, I haven't looked to my right to see the eye rolls if there were any, so.
There haven't been, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think it's pretty clear. Okay, this is your opportunity to pick a path, okay? Either you believe in this, you hear the feedback here, there's not a lot of working session, I'm just gonna be really straightforward on this. We just gave you a window to come through here. It's up to you to whether or not you want to do that. If you really believe in this project, if you really think this is gonna work, recognizing that if you get that okay on the 16th, it's gonna take you a year to pull everybody, get this all up and running. Well, let's be realistic about this, okay? You want to get on this train, here's the way to do it. I think, you know, that, I-
I think, I think we've, I've heard you loud and clear, I know exactly what you need.
I know exactly what this is gonna take. I don't think, I don't think a working session is necessary.
Are we, are we causing any alarm bells to go off?
I know, you're very correct.
Legally, are you thinking, oh geez, they're walking into a lawsuit right now? Or is this, is this something that addresses your concerns?
You haven't done anything.
Yes, but we need to hear your advice.
Right. So the only thing that I, the only thing that I would say is that there have been, I believe it was three meetings with the planning board and nothing, there are no new issues that have arisen since those planning board meetings. So all of the issues that's being discussed here at the Board of Selectmen and that the petitioner is presenting have been discussed within those two meetings of the planning board. So whether or not a working session would be productive at this point after going through that process and those same issues were raised and there was no sort of change that addressed a lot of the planning board's concerns that was offered, I don't necessarily think that would be as productive as we would all hope.
And I'd like to say, the changes to this zoning law do not just affect 1600 Osgood Street, and you need to keep that in mind. There's another, there's other areas that are covered under this overlay district that you don't own. So you need to keep that in mind at all times.
That was brought to our attention, and obviously, as you can see, we were only focused on trying to make changes with regard to our property. We did not see the impact of that, but we also do believe we have an easy solution for that.
Okay. Because the word and can make a big difference there.
I understand that. And if there were language added that said, however, X use and Y use cannot occur on the same parcel of land, that might help resolve that problem. And you might very well see that in the revised version of the warrant article that gets presented at town meeting. Understood?
Thank you.
Loud and clear.
You know, this is the part that troubles me, I'm getting back to that $3 million so that, as many of you know, we do not have many commercial industrial places left in town for a variety of reasons, the shape of the town, wetlands, so forth and so on. And you're asking, is there, what, is there something, Jeff?
No, nothing. Go ahead with the panelists.
So you put out this with the $3 million, and I guess I would ask you, you're asking us to buy in and to buy in pieces and sections and, I guess I'd ask you to buy in and put forth that you won't get the $3 million in increments, but when the project gets approved or the zoning gets changed, that you buy in at that time. This is a really important project for this town and it's tough because we've got all these moving pieces, we've got, well, we'd like to keep this in place and this in place and do this and maybe not till then. You know, if you're really gonna buy in, I guess I'd ask you to really buy in and do what your phone call was suggesting, even though it wasn't made clear. And if this gets approved, go right to the $3 million that would be worked out in the host community agreement.
Rosemary, I'm willing to consider that. You know, it's, I think, you know, negotiating the host community agreement is with Andrew. And, you know, it's, Andrew has that authority. And I'm certainly willing-
But it has to come back to the Board of Selectmen.
Of course, of course, of course. But I'm with you on that. And Chris, I'm with you as well. And I hear both of you, what you're saying. And, you know, we need your support. We need, you know, the town wants your support. And what I'm hearing is from the board as a whole is, we like the idea, we see some promise here, I'm seeing more promise than I expected. I, you know, I'm a bit overwhelmed by, you know, just how much promise there is. It's really exciting. And I hear what you're saying is that you want to make sure that this is a good thing for the town. So in terms of you want to see a buy-in, in terms of us making a commitment, most of the time when you see a host agreement, you don't see a floor. So in the host agreement. So the amount in the host agreement was actually a floor that we suggested to help the town better understand the positive financial impact this would have, you know, for the community. So I'm willing to sit down with Andrew and talk about, you know, a schedule. And he can certainly consult with you with what you have in mind. And I'm agreeable to that, I like that. I think that's a smart idea. I think it's a good idea. And, but I think it has to be done in, you know, proper, you know, I don't want to undermine Andrew in that.
But I do want to, but I do want to make it clear, I don't-
You did a really good job, I don't feel-
I think it's very, Andrew, I'd rather negotiate with you. You're gonna be easier on me. But Rosemary, I hear what you're saying and I'm very open to that. You know, with your support and I think we're willing to put, because we think that this is gonna be, you know, positive and we're willing to put upfront money as you're suggesting, perhaps not quite the magnitude you're suggesting.
Well, I'm kind of hoping for the magnitude, to tell you the truth.
Well, no, but we would have to permit a million feet. And that, so in terms of having the money as we permit and obtain permits from planning board, you know, if I can only do 100,000 feet, then I'll put that money upfront. So as we permit and grow this and grow into this, we can do that.
The president, the president said we don't negotiate.
Yeah, I would, I agree. Let's not negotiate this tonight.
No, no, I understand, but we're-
I guess I was asking for-
Rosemary, we're open to-
Full upfront commitment, that's, this is a big project, but I, I need to be clearly on the record, I am absolutely not sold on the recreational piece of it at all. I am, I can certainly support medicinal research development, so many of the other letters that you've sent and I struggle with, I really struggle with such a large recreational piece.
Help me understand, when you say recreational, just so I understand how your approach is, when you say recreational, large recreational, what are you referring to specifically within their proposal that you see as large recreational?
Like a number, you mean?
Well, what is that? What part of the proposal is recreational in your, as you hear them present this?
It was pretty much what they said at the last meeting, that a portion of the cannabis would be used for recreational and sold or distributed elsewhere to be outside dispensaries. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
No, no, just to clarify and then what Jeff was saying earlier, that to, so the idea around recreational or adult use is to allow that to happen for, to be grown for research and development?
That part I get, but from what you've described at your previous meeting, that part was huge, way more than you would possibly ever need. And there was talk, and maybe it was through a discussion that I had with Mrs. Goldstein, that it would be shipped out in armored type vehicles to other facilities.
That would be for medical, for medical dispensaries and other places?
Only medical dispensary, so you have no intention of growing large quantities of recreational that would be sold?
We're gonna engage in legal pursuits. You can't handcuff an industry.
Okay.
One doesn't sell telephones and say, well, I'm not gonna sell to the mafia. You know, it's, one can't do that. It's, you know, there's an ability to sell, we're gonna engage in legal activities. State voted, we didn't make the laws. And, you know, if the state has a law, then we're gonna abide by all state rules and regulations. The, you know, we've said that we're, you know, we have no interest, one didn't come to this site to buy a router for the internet or a telephone, it wasn't a retail site. So, you know, there are much better retail sites and locations than, you know, than this property. It's just an industrial site and we want to be an industry. But the companies that are gonna come in and work with us and grow, I can't regulate and say, you can grow for this purpose and not that purpose. What I can say to them is, you can grow for legal purposes in our Commonwealth. In terms of, Chris, the, you know, the, in terms of, you know, working out the language and fill, you know, simplifying the language, I agree with you, it's become a bit convoluted. And honestly, much of that convolution was, were our attempts and responses in trying to add clarity. And I agree with you, I think the document is a bit difficult to read and I do think it needs to be simplified. So we're, you know, very open to that. And, you know, I think we have the concerns, you know, if the board is willing to give us the letter from the town attorney, we're certainly, I think, willing to address those issues. In terms of size limitations, you know-
I think that we seem on board with giving you that letter, but-
Right.
I mean, it sounds like we're going right back to the beginning, in a good way, it seems like we've closed the loop, the whole idea of how we simplify.
In terms of the size limitations, why not just take out a size limitation? If I wind up with a company that wants a million eight feet of the facility, I-
You guys-
We have an idea.
Yeah, we don't want to be limited.
To the similarity question, which was rather convoluted, anything that didn't go to RMD or medical is what Rosemary is defining as recreational. I think that's it. Right. So if you're selling to another facility that may sell it to retail facilities or, just so that we're all on the same page, there's certainly part of this business plan that would be adult use, what we're used, we haven't made the transition yet to the new term, right? We're still on recreational. Adult use slash recreation.
But I think the point they were making, which everybody needs to understand, is it's the recreational law that was passed in November that enables the RMD portion to-
Yes.
-happen. So if you just grow for medicinal use, that, you know, marijuana that's grown has to go to an end patient, if I understand correctly, it cannot go to an RMD facility. They, an RMD company, an RMD company has to get something that's grown under a recreational quote-unquote law.
Correct.
Correct?
And a lot of the-
So it's not really recreational.
Well, but that doesn't mean it will be limited to that.
No, but just to say-
Yeah.
Recreational quote-unquote includes research and development, stuff, something that's grown for research and development and something that's grown for someone to be recreating with.
Well, you know, it's more interesting than that. What happens if you take a plant and you're growing a pharmaceutical, and we have a pharmaceutical product, we extract products from that, some of it is for the pharmaceutical and some of the same plant is for adult use recreational. What do we do in that standpoint? Because we're manufacturing the pharmaceutical in North Andover, we have to ship that product to another town? Or we have to waste it and put it in the sewer? I mean, it's, one can't re-
We wouldn't want you to put it in the sewer.
We understand, but-
That would be bad.
I think we're getting sewer is a bad choice.
But that's the way this industry is going, that these plants have numerous bioactive compounds. Some are psychoactive, but many bioactive. And so products stream, products are going in different directions and, you know, a company, a company is gonna-
I think it's the concern of the percentages.
Well, I understand that and-
I understand, I understand what you're saying, I understand the complications of this law. I mean, that's kind of crazy talk that it can't be, you have to grow recreational or non-medicinal in order for it to go into research and development for medicinal, that's just crazy talk, but that's the way it's written.
Yeah, we agree with you. The reason, I mean, the thing is that without-
And I agree with everybody, it's-
The state of Washington moved all medical into the recreational.
So just to clarify, because a lot of this sounds like it's more Article 9. There are some items on Article 11, I just want to make sure. Article 11 is the map, there were specific items to Article 11. So Article 9 includes language that references the map? Is that?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
And so I think it's worthwhile to, Suzanne can comment on Article 11.
So there would be a concern that there's two articles, one references the other or?
Well, Article 11 has some, some things that Suzanne commented on as part of the lettuce that you have. So there are some changes that need to be made to the map.
Mm-hmm. So, yes, so there's the map amendment, which extends the MMOD to 60, portions of 1600 Osgood. And then there's Section 812-3, which is in the second article, which is the narrative, this is the boundaries are the MMOD as shown on the zoning map and shall include, and it says the following parcels. And right now, those parcels are only the ones that are located on Holt Road. So if the map amendment were to be voted favorably, then to be consistent, that 812-3 would also have to be amended to include that portion in existing MMOD.
So a change that is, sorry, a change that's necessary within the zoning article for it to match the map, is that section would need to be amended to make sure it included the parcels that are at 1600 Osgood. So there's the map in Article 11 and the narrative that's due to match, that wasn't in what you have from Suzanne. And there's a section of the 812-3, which does not include-
812.3, yep.
So in the versions of the Warren article that were amended and distributed to the last planning-
But remember, everything we started with is we're not dealing with amendments, we're dealing with the original. We're aware, you're aware.
So just so this board is aware, because I don't know what version of the articles you have in front of you.
Only the original one filed.
The one that was submitted back in March.
And I'm not aware what you have for the memo from town council in front of you. Many of these were addressed in a version of the Warren articles that evolved through-
So we can, not to cut you off, but I feel like the chairman's been direct though, we only have the one version that's printed in the hard book that's been distributed to the public. So the top of versions doesn't matter because the chairman has made it clear.
If you haven't seen it, you should pick it up.
I drafted it, I've seen it.
Well, then let's stop talking about amendments at this point.
If I could, my understanding is that prior to town meeting, I can submit a marked version of the article that falls within the scope of the article.
Yes.
And I can ask the moderator to open town meeting with the version shown on the screen-
Yes.
-that we hand out in advance.
Yes.
So as we've come to each meeting, and as we've met with various people, you know, boards or individuals in town, we have updated that article to be the article that we would be putting on the board.
But that's to, so why don't we, you're, you're, that's, you can give that to inform us, but it cannot impact our decision-making tonight. Is that kind of what I'm saying?
That's correct.
It's been said seventeen times.
I think, I think we're good with your information.
We understand.
I think you can take a seat. We're good with your information.
We got it.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate it. Okay. Are we ready to take action, or to take vote on these articles, whether we have further discussion, further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I motion that we take no action on this article.
Which article?
On article, on, can actually, can I, can we, we should take them separately, correct? As a point of...
You can do either, but certainly you could take them separately, either one.
So my, my, I would motion that we take no action on articles both nine and 11, because I would not want to, given the fact that we are leaving this meeting and following this discussion, having determined that there are amendments that need to be made, I would hate for members of the public to come into town meeting thinking that we are against this article in general, but in fact, we are against this language. And that will be addressed ideally that evening by the applicant or petitioner, excuse me. But I just, I'm supposed to be seconded, so I'm sorry.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have no second on the no action?
Can second it for the point of discussion, if you'd like.
We could second it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, let's discuss this. I, I tend to agree with Selectman DeCalle Gero's input, that we take no action, and we wait until the night of town meeting, so that we don't sway potentially to vote one way or the other, because we, there could be additional amendments made on the, on the floor of town meeting.
And it's because the expectation is that we would be leaving this meeting with these folks making amendments, knowing that they will come to town meeting with amendments. And if we took unfavorable action, or, I would say, I would, my assumption would be we are inclined to not take favorable action. But if we took unfavorable action, then I would think that the public would come in, perhaps intending to vote no, and not prepared to hear our discussion and the amendments that the applicants are presenting. Whereas by not taking action, I think that we retain their attention, the public's attention, when it comes to this, so that when ideally amendments are proposed, and ideally the language is simplified, the public will look at it without us imparting bias on them.
Yes, but again, though, dealing with what we have in front of us, and to leave it open, I think it still continues to be confusing to the public. I, I think everyone can change their mind on the floor of town meeting. We could vote unfavorable, and then change our mind with the amendments.
I, I think that's our, that's our hope, but to...
But again...
Whereas if we recommend unfavorable in that scenario, there would be people going in thinking that we are opposed, perhaps, to the concept, because of the, earlier this evening, I tried to think of who has called me to speak to me about this, and actually there was one person, I, I hadn't remembered that conversation initially, who assumed certain positions based on our discussion, which was not the case. They assumed we were kicking into town meeting because we were too, we didn't want to take a stance. And I think it's important that we, as, as ambassador role, as members of this board, that we make clear that it's not necessarily black and white, and this is absolutely an issue where we've ventured into a gray area. Because I think we've all expressed that we wanna see something happen at that site. I think if we were to vote unfavorable action, we'd be leaving this meeting tonight, though understanding, and I think we've made clear why it would be unfavorable. I think that the public's mess, the message delivered to the public could very well be that we are against the very concept at that site. And of course, we can talk about it that night at town meeting, but that's, that's my concern as somebody who truly wants to see us get to this compromise.
If I can just comment as to process while the discussion is ongoing, with an attempt to influence where it's going. Process is relevant here. So you'll have a meeting at six o'clock, it'll begin at six o'clock on the night of town meeting. At that point, if there are amendments proposed, certainly the applicant, petitioner can provide you with those amendments. And although they haven't yet been offered on the screen, they're worthwhile information, and the board can, we will add to an agenda the option for you to vote, so that we're, that's an available option, even if you don't take advantage of it. We, we should wanna make sure you have the flexibility.
To vote on the amendments, or...
Well, on, on whatever you want. We don't have to put on the agenda, but if you decide not to take a vote, if there's an amendment and you choose to support it, and it's not on an agenda, you wouldn't vote. So I'm just throwing that out there. Two, you would wanna make sure you continue your reading, if you plan on having a collective opinion on anything on that screen. Because as a board, unless you stay in session, you can't take a collective action. You'd have to recess town meeting, step out, call a meeting, in essence, would probably could declare it an emergency meeting, and then deliberate then and come back for an opinion. So I'm just saying, on the floor, as it relates to a collective opinion, that can be a little choppy, as you can imagine. You can do that by remaining in session, and technically deliberate across one another, and see if you can reach a court. So I just want you to understand the process side of things. We'll follow whatever direction you give us, but from a process perspective, you can choose to vote before the meeting or not. But if you thought that that was possible, we'd wanna put an item on the agenda. And if you choose to possibly vote on the floor, you'd wanna make sure that the meeting is not, you'd recess and relocate, and not close the meeting.
So what you would say, we would ask the moderator for a brief recess, for us to discuss?
It's the only way, if you would decide, if you got on the floor and decided that an amendment was up there, on any article, that you...
Yeah, it could be anything.
Doesn't matter what it is, that you felt like you were changing a direction on, or providing new insight. You then, up in that board, are speaking individually unless you are still in a board meeting. Right?
I think that's, that's an important process point. I, my, my fear is, and I'm, I'm thinking anecdotally of, of something that happened last week. We had an article about the farmer's market, and despite that article being posted, people still commented on the article itself, asking, where is it and what time? Not reading the article. And so I, I'm being cognizant of what's the headline produced by our decision tonight?
The news article, yeah.
Is the headline that's produced that we reject it, in which case, we then have to explain again that we're adding another layer of confusion? Or if it's that we're leaving this meeting tonight with the hope that amendments are brought to town meeting? I think that, that gives greater clarity in what still is a very cloudy situation to the public, and it at least affords us the opportunity to continue the discussion, and the public understanding that the discussion is, is not closed.
We could also state individually our position after the amendments are...
Absolutely.
...are presented. We could state individually our positions on that article at that point.
Yes, yeah. Just couldn't do anything collectively.
Before the, before the public votes.
Before, yeah. Sure do. Then they'll most likely ask our opinion.
Take the microphone.
But it would be five individuals, that's all.
Exactly, it'd be five individuals.
If we stay in session, we can, we can talk quietly, and then...
So let me, let me, let me challenge the idea of the glass is half-empty versus the glass is half-full. Because your proposal is assuming the negative with the opportunity to get to the positive. What if you flip that around and say, if you endorse, let's, let's, let's walk down this path. We walked down one path, let's walk down another path. What if you endorse the proposals, as they said, recognizing same set of circumstances, right? That this is all subject to revision? Don't we have the same opportunity to do the flip side of that at the meeting, which is to, to say individually, individually? Which I think is even more powerful, to say, if it's not as promised, the power of an individual selectmen, each one of us, to be able to stand in front of town meeting and say, you know what? We opened up the door, we gave you the green light with the presumption these pieces were going to come together. You didn't deliver as promised? I will be voting against this. The power of that is tremendous. And I would say to you, if you really wanna have a good faith discussion, this is where it all, everybody puts it all out there. And I think, so I'm taking your concept...
Are you coming, are you coming at it from the direction of you would, you would like to see favorable action on this?
Absolutely.
Tonight?
Tonight.
I think, I'm, I'm trying to be pragmatic, and I think the hour-long discussion shows that that's, I would assume that this is not the direction that this board is going in.
I won't vote on something that's not.
So I'm trying to preserve what is going to be, I, I'm trying to keep this alive, and that vote, I would vote against that as well. And I, I, I don't wanna see this, I don't wanna see anybody walk into town meeting, because, again, this, this particular former, former school committee member had called and said, you know, I really look to guidance on things like this from the Board of Selectmen. And I think if the headline is that we reject this, and if the headline in the press is that we reject it, it, it sends a message to a town meeting where they only need, where they, excuse me, will need two-thirds of attendees to support this. And so if we want this, if we believe in the potential, and that's where I'm coming from, as applicants, I want you to know, I believe in the potential of this, I want to keep it alive, I wanna make sure the public remains engaged and does not think that I personally, speaking only as myself, as one member of this board, that I don't support this. If put in that position, I would have to vote against it.
Yeah, Phil, I have, sorry. I don't wanna be informal. I have to agree with what you're saying. I felt even last week that it was our obligation to vote to let the public know what we, what we think. I think that that's why we're in this position. That being said, given the fact that we know there's going to be an amendment, I, I, and I don't agree with some of the language in Article nine. I mean, I just can't vote favorably for something that I just don't think is appropriate, even if I love the vision and want it to succeed. And I do agree that the headline of Board of Selectmen reject this will influence a lot of people, and they might not listen to the amendment with the same ear and open mind that they would if it was an open, you know, no, no statement made. So I, I like the idea of delaying, even though I really wish we could vote. Even though I hate the idea, I, in this case, I think it's the right thing to do.
I also don't, because I feel like, to a certain segment, it might look like we're punting. I mean, I'll, I'll put every effort into explaining to the public why.
Right.
And, and I think that we all have that ability through social media, et cetera, to explain our, our position, which is not, I think, again, we've been pretty clear what our positions are.
Yeah.
If anybody wanted to watch tonight's meeting, anybody at home watching tonight's meeting, I don't think it at all looks like we're shirking our responsibility. I think it's our effort, and we wanna keep this, I want, I'd like to keep it alive.
So, so the, so the motion on the floor is for both Articles nine and 11, and it's to take no action?
Is that your intention, from nine and 11, or just nine?
There were not actually, that was my intention, however, remembering, there was actually no, no amendments that need to be made to, to Article 11, correct? The map, the map as presented does meet, or address the concerns that were previously raised?
Suzanne, can I just...
The map was revised, and revised, and the town was made, and it will be on the screen at the town meeting.
So it would have to be just, I think Suzanne would agree with that through the letters she provided. So if you wanted to take 11s separate, you would have to come with a condition of a motion that it, that it's the revised map provided to the planning or something. Could not be the map that's coming in the eye.
I would entertain a friendly amendment to my motion, then, if I colleague.
And what would that be?
To, to remove art, to, to have my motion only apply to Article nine, as opposed to Article 11 as well, and then to have, to decouple the two, so that they're two separate motions.
Okay. So we have first a motion on the floor that to, for no action for both Articles nine and 11. We have a second to that motion. And now you're amending the motion.
Can I amend my own motion?
It's a friendly amendment to decouple it.
Decouple and have it only apply to Article...
I don't even know if you actually said nine and 11 when you made the motion.
If you did.
You did, yeah. You did, okay. So now you wanna decouple those two, so...
Yes, I'd, I'd like to decouple them, so that the votes on the two are separate.
I need some help with Robert rules. Do we, do we need to...
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
Well, I need, someone needs to second my amendment.
So we need a second on the amendments.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a, the amendment is to remove Article 11 from the original motion. Any further, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, so I'll hear a vote. All those in favor of removing Article 11 from Phil's original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we're back to the original motion, which is for just Article nine, for no action on Article nine at this point. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Article nine?
I'm just still very uncomfortable voting on what, what might come our way, so I will vote no, just because I have to vote with what's in front of me, and not, well, we're thinking we might have some amendment, so I wanna leave it open. But that's just me.
But it's no action?
No, I know.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion?
I think it just comes down to trust, and so I would like us to take action. I understand how I sit within this board. But I'm a believer that, in, in good faith and in credit, I've not sat on this board as long as, you know, my peers here, but that's the way I approach things. So my willingness to, or eagerness to take action is because I, I really do, do believe in it, support it. I see all these reasons for it. And so, while it may be a, I would like us to see, see us take action, but I understand I'm in the minority.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, so voting on Article nine, no action is the recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
For a different reason than you, but logical.
So, all right, so three, two for no action on Article nine. Let's move to Article 11. Do we have a...
Can we just talk about, if you wanna make a motion in a second, I think Suzanne will have some commentary about, well, we might wanna go discussion.
Probably before the, we'd probably want it before a motion's been made.
Yeah, I would say before motions. So Suzanne, do you want me to comment?
Yes, so I, I'd like to address the, the map issue. So the map as presented with the citizen's petition doesn't accurately depict the site, as I stated in my memo. And so, in the interim, the petitioners have presented a map that does show the, the plans that have been recorded, the registry of deeds. And that's a plan that's dated March 31st, that was submitted to the planning board for their discussion. So what I wanna make sure is that, 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 that plan, the March 31st plan, is incorporated into any decision that you're going to make, that you understand that. Because you don't, it would be very, it'd be hard to implement, it would be difficult to work with any map amendment that's shown on this map that was submitted by the petitioners.
So, there's no substantive changes to the article other than a correction, an administrative correction to the map, is that...
Well, the article is the map.
Yeah.
Is, it's to amend the zoning map. And so the map that was submitted to amend the zoning map was inaccurate. And so they had to present a whole entirely new map that showed some lots carved out, and, and so that's, and that's, I think that's a pretty critical point. So it's not necessarily just administrative, but it would have to be incorporated into the map.
Does the March 31st map accurately reflect the...
Yes.
...parcel associated with the zoning amendment change?
It does.
So we have a known, so we have the known document, vehicle, and information, which is tied to the article itself, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, yep.
So...
March 31st map filed with the planning board.
Right. So you would, so you would just do, you would amend, your, your motion would be, if you were to approve it, to approve it with the March 31st, 2017 map.
But the article printed in the warrant is incorrect.
Correct.
Yes.
Incorrect, whatever, great.
Yes.
So, okay.
But we, so we could approve this thing with the stipulation that such and such language is changed, that we... We couldn't have done that on the prior one? No.
Go ahead.
What I, what I'm saying is that what you wanna make sure is, if you're going to take a motion and you're going to vote to approve this, that you're aware of the fact that this is specifically to amend your zoning map, and the plan submitted doesn't accurately depict the site. So that's, you're in the same type of situation.
I, I would say, and I'm not trying to influence the board, I would say the difference[1680.58] I would say, and I'm not trying to influence the board, I would say the difference between the zoning is it's, it's, it's more difficult within the zoning, because any proposed changes that may come up on town meeting floor, quite frankly, could raise new questions. It's the complication of the zoning conundrum of how does this affect something else when proposed? In the map's case, it's wrong. We know what the correct map is. It's not, it's a, it's a yes or no, it's not a maybe, and we know what that document is, and it was filed with the planning board on March 31st. So, you certainly can take action then to wait to see the map, or do it on the floor, that's certainly your option. But you, you wouldn't move forward with supporting, you should not move forward, with supporting the map that was provided with Article Eleven.
We see agreement on this.
So, it either would be the map provided to the planning board on March 31st, but not the map that's in the article.
And it's dated March 31st.
Dated March 31st.
So?
So, it's a little, it's.
Is that?
This is a March 31st, my bad, I want to see it.
But it's not what's in the article?
Nope. And so, that's the only difference between, is the zoning one, when it comes on the board, there'll be new analysis done. That, that analysis is clearly done as it relates to the map. We know what the right map is, we know the map that was submitted is not the correct map. However, that influences your discussion.
I really don't know.
But it was clarified, though, that we can, the motion that we can make before us, we could have a motion before us right now that accepts the amended map.
But it's, but it's not what is, so it is not?
No, what's in the warrant.
It's not in the warrant.
Voting what's in the warrant. We said that from the very beginning.
No, I, but I.
I think you can take two votes if you want. You can take two votes.
But now you're really, I mean, it's sort of one of those, you know, technicality is not a fair term to use, but from a practical standpoint, we have the fact, right? We have the fact that that's what this is, that's what's intended, that's what we all agree with. The question is, are we going to say, because it's not printed in the warrant as such, that causes us to say no, or are we, because this is factually the reality of it, going to take that, that incremental step and say we accept it with this language saying, we accept it, knowing that this is the map that's being referenced?
I think that, I would say to this, to that conversation, the difficulty is maybe on the map it seems easier, but the practice of, of making opinions and taking votes on opinions of citizen petitions with assumptions of what they will be, this is the difficulty, is that there are assumptions to be made. And so, if you know in advance, you could, there's a number of different ways around this. You vote no on this particular one and decide to take a motion of the board to vote yes on the March 31st version, it's not specific to the article, but it's clear if it appears on the screen, I'm just, I'm just saying.
No, I agree with that.
And it gives you the option to say, but we did vote on the March 31st version, and so it appears on the screen, if it happened not to be in session, you've already reached consensus about that map. It's just, I think, varying from the process where you vote on assumptions of what will get posted, it's just someday it's going to create a difficulty, which may not be as obvious as it relates to the map. So, if you had an interest to do that, you could vote the map as either reporter coming or whatever you want. Then I think you could take a second vote if you wanted to say, however you felt about the March 30, the map dated March 31st that was submitted to the planning board. Then if it appears on the screen, the vote's already been taken, the board has, will be shown as having taken part of its own stance. It's one way to deal with the process.
So, let me, I don't, I'm not that.
I know.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say that what you're proposing or what you're suggesting, that we can vote on the article as printed, and then take a second vote on the March 31st version of the map outside of a warrant article.
Outside the warrant.
Just to approve the March 31st version of the map to be presented at, at town.
And if that gets presented, you've already taken a vote, they recognize you support the map as presented on March 31st, and if it's what they pop on the screen, they, the petitioner knows you feel that way, and quite frankly, town meeting will quickly know.
Can we actually do that? We can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda.
I think you can do it, given the fact you're taking up Article Nine, it's only a sense of the board, anyway. Not too worried about where it stands.
The other concern is that I haven't seen the map. I mean, I know you were just off of it, but that's tonight. I haven't seen it.
You don't have to take it.
But as far, but we could, we could wait until the night of town meeting.
Same thing.
That's an example of.
Mm-hmm. Yep, same thing.
I'd like some time to look at it, yeah.
Sure.
And I think it's pretty clear that if we were to, if a motion was to be made to reject this article, it would be, I think, clearly easy to understand and clearly communicated that it was because of a technicality with this map, right? So, I mean.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Motion on favorable action on Article Eleven.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
This is the erroneous map.
Yes.
Just to be clear, I will second that.
The defect in the article. All right, we have a motion and a second, let's discuss it. Any further?
I think that this, we can clearly communicate this, as opposed to the complexities of the prior article. This one is, can be clearly communicated, we would be able to go into town meetings still and say.
Good point.
We rejected that article, but then when the amendment pops up, you as chairman will be able to say, without having to recess, that we are in favor or not in favor of the amended map.
Yeah, we can't say that right now, right?
No.
We would say favor on.
No, we could, we could if we, I mean.
Once we see the map.
Yes, so we could put this on the agenda for the meeting before.
You're, you're not concerned with a big negative headline of?
Yeah.
Of this one?
Yeah.
Of a map?
Well.
No, I think that we addressed it in our previous one, because it's a map adjustment.
So, there's no reporters here tonight, but we'll be watching the tape. Let's be clear that it's because, you know, any action at this point is because there's a technical defect in the, in the article that's as printed in the warrant, and quite frankly, I'm not going to vote for an article that's wrong.
Right now, I'm me either.
I'm not going to vote favorable for an article that's wrong.
And this gives us that flexibility that night before town meeting, and again, it's, it's pretty clear, technicality. I mean, I think that the heftier amendment was the actual language in the zoning, and we've addressed that, and I think that that's, you know, if, I mean, it's clear that, I think, from pulling this board and comments made, that we're not accepting it likely, perhaps, so why not just get this ball rolling as quickly and efficiently as possible, so that we can help these applicants and help achieve what I think most of us would hope can happen with that site?
Any further discussion?
You don't agree. I think glass half empty, glass half full. There are two ways to approach it, same, trying to get to the same destination. I like to try, try the positive path, and I think it's unfortunate, because I think right to your, your point, with the positive path, it's easier to explain the technicalities behind it, and we have the incredible leverage of being on that stage. If it isn't as delivered, nothing sinks faster than when you stand on that stage.
I respect your opinions, but I also vote on something that's not accurate, with a hope and a prayer.
Well, I don't know, it's a hope and a prayer. I think it's pretty much factual. Our, our issue here is, it's factual, but it doesn't fit in with the technicalities of our timing here. And I think, from where I come from, I'm trying to look at this as the average citizen who only has two or three minutes, because they've got all these things going on in their lives. And we're asking them to understand, we're not taking action on this because, and this is a technicality, so we're voting against it here, and, and I, as I say, I would rather take that position and say, I'm, I'm stepping forward with this, and I'm stepping forward with it because I believe and I need to see that it's delivered as promised, but you have my word that if it's not delivered as promised at town meeting, I will be as loud as any voice on that stage and in that.
But that will not change that we will have, I mean, we will still have been on record as recommending favorable action, though. So, even if you say, well, now, now I'm against it, only you can say that. That's, that, because we won't be in session, and so the board will have still given its blessing to that. I mean, it's a technicality, and so I, I think that this is not typically the type of thing that people are, I don't think people are looking at maps as much as they're looking at the language, which the prior language would have effectively abdicated, we would be, as a board, abdicated, because of our role in the process, our seating, some of our role in the process. This is an opportunity where we will still be able to go to town meeting and say, this is the amended map based on what was presented on March 31st, and we've already voted to recommend favorable action. Whereas, the language in the prior amendment, when we were discussing that, we weren't going to have that option. This we do. So, we will be able to speak again through our chairman at town meeting and say, this is why. The others, that were, that were so convoluted, we weren't going to have that opportunity.
Anything else? All right, so we're voting on a motion for unfavorable action for Article Eleven. We have a motion and a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor in Phil's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, four, one.
And we'll get you a copy of the March 31st updated map, Jane.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Good luck at town meeting.
Yeah, it's public record.
Mr. Chairman, I motion we move into licensing.
Motion to move into licensing, do we have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now on licensing.
Perfect. Thank you to everyone who was patiently waiting.
Thank you all.
This evening, hopefully you found it and figured it out. So, we have on the agenda this evening, the under item, Armin Jekneboy and the St. Gregory Ardevenian Apostolic Church requests a one-day all-alcohol license for the seventh annual cigar night and dinner on Thursday, June 15th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. until 11:30 p.m., and a request to waive the fee as this applicant, or as the agenda says, this is the seventh time they've been before us. In the past, we have approved them. I don't know if anybody is in the audience this evening from the church?
I'm here.
Perfect. Armin, thank you for patiently waiting. And if you wouldn't mind addressing the board with your name.
I tell you, you just gave me an incentive not to run for town council, so you're not going to have any competition for me. All right, I, I think, I know most of you, but I've been up here several times, and again, I'm requesting a one-day liquor license for our fundraiser cigar night, and it's going to be held on June 15th, and we are asking for a waiver of fees, because we're a nonprofit organization. Any questions?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
I said, I'll move approval.
A motion, motion for approval, do we have a second?
I have a second, Ed.
Here a second, any discussion? You did see from the police department, the request that you actually.
We did fax over my tip certification to the police department, if that's what you're asking, and they gave us their approval.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Good luck.
Good luck, have a good evening.
So, next on the agenda, we have Jade Group Inc. doing business as Jade North Andover. They're requesting an all-alcohol general on-premise license, and an entertainment license for a restaurant that would be located at 24 High Street, which is the Mills, just down the road. Do we have anybody here this evening from Jade?
Attorney Brian Vaughn from Small Island, on behalf of the Jade Group. As, as I guess, License Commissioner, Phil DeColerio has mentioned, we're, we've applied for multiple license, a Section 12 foreign license for a new restaurant that's supposed to be opening in West Mill, an entertainment license for purposes of having live television broadcast, as well as a conflictual license. The group that's applying for, for this license is actually a seasoned veteran. They've been around, they've got a number of different locations in the Commonwealth. They know what they're doing, they're professional outfit. It's proposed to be a Asian fusion, fusion, excuse me, concept. It's going to have sushi, oriental cuisine. More than happy to answer any questions that, that the board may have.
I'm just, just out of curiosity, where are there, where are your other locations, and are they of the same name?
So, I, I think the closest location that they have would be North Reading, if you're familiar with the Mandarin.
Yes, very.
So, they operate multiple locations under, I think Bamboo was another one of their.
Well, there was a Jade in Andover, was that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that was there a long time. It's, it's still there? It was moved from the current location?
No, 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 no.
This is a new.
No, I, this is not.
Well, the way you were looking at me, I thought it was.
This is not affiliated with the old Jade that was in Andover. This is, I, I think there's confusion just because.
Okay.
This is going to be called Jade North Andover.
Right, and I thought.
But it is not.
Jade Andover, yeah, you know where I'm going, right?
I know where you're going, but, but, no, it's.
And what's the capacity expected to be for the restaurant?
I believe the seating was 199, 250 total.
That's a big establishment, wow.
Yeah, big.
It's actually going to be located, if you're familiar with the, with the Mill, kind of on the West Mill side where the old cafeteria was.
Oh, yeah, so across the.
So, it was set back a little bit where the Schneider cafeteria was.
Wow.
What's the, and the entertainment license would be for televisions and music?
Correct. Well, I'm just saying, you know, we've had some issues in the past, and I want to, I mean,
I'm not saying it's, it's a bad thing, but I think if, if we do, we let's, you know, we need to be ultra vigilant on, and I know Selectman Smidely will give that speech at the end.
You want to give that speech, I think.
But we need to be very careful, because we've had some bad experiences.
I don't remember karaoke piece.
So, I'll make a motion. Move the Board of Selectmen, acting as licensing commissioners, approve the all-alcohol general on-premise license and entertainment license for Jade Group Inc. doing businesses Jade North Andover as presented.
And what date will they be opening?
They want to open as, as quickly as they can, obviously, but it's obviously a significant undertaking for construction. The lease has the contingency for the license approval. Once the license is approved, the landlord is going to do some preliminary build-out. Once the landlord completes their build-out, the tenant will then complete the build-out, I think.
So, it sounds like it could be a little while, then?
Yeah, they're, they were originally hoping to be able to open as early as June or July, but based on the timelines with which the lease was negotiated, and then also still needing to wait after this board hopefully approves it, waiting for Boston, I would guess more realistic timeline would probably be August, maybe September.
Which isn't, which isn't bad, because a lot of people come back and the restaurant business really takes off.
Yeah.
In September, which is great, so. So, I, I will, did you second it?
No one seconded it.
No, I made a motion.
I will second it, that's why you can't second.
I can't. Well, if you're made and seconded by Selectman Smidely, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, now I'll give my speech, so Town of North Andover prides itself on adhering to very strict drinking regulations and laws. We are a college town, so, just so that you're aware, and I'm sure you are aware if you're tip certified, that out-of-state licenses are not proof of proper identification in order to serve them alcohol, and we do have a lot of out-of-state licenses. So, if you do take it, and it turns out to be a false ID, it is your responsibility. We will not say, oh, sorry, it looked good. We often recommend that people get the machines, and if you have a good machine and it passes, unless the person, and I always make this joke, looks like they're a baby with a pacifier in their mouth, the board would usually give you some sort of understanding that you did everything humanly possible. But to take an out-of-state license and, which turns out to be a false ID, you are doing it at your own risk, and we do take it very, very, very seriously. I give this speech to everybody, so that's all. Fair warning, and we wish you. Yeah, right. Well, you know, I'm sure you do not want to serve to someone underage who could potentially get hurt or hurt somebody driving or whatever, so it's, you've been in the business, you get it. So, we wish you well, and congratulations.
Yeah, it looks like an absolutely beautiful facility, too, looking at the layout, and, and once you've got plan there, it looks phenomenal, so congratulations, and we can't wait to go there. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, the next item on the agenda is actually ten.
Sorry it was so long.
So, so we have 10 items on the agenda this evening from Merrimack College, all one-day requests, varying. So, we have a one-day wine and malt license for May 17th, which is a Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. A one-day wine and malt license on May 18th, which is a Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have a one-day all-alcohol license request for Saturday, June 3rd, from 5:30 to 10:30 p.m. A one-day all-alcohol license for June 4th, which is a Sunday, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. One-day all-alcohol license for Sunday, June 4th, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. One-day all-alcohol license for Sunday, June 4th, another one for 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. An additional one, a one-day all-alcohol license, 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. on June 4th. I believe they actually all stay till June 4th, so we have two more additional all-day, all-alcohol licenses, both for that day, and then the final item is a one-day wine and malt for Sunday, June 4th, 5:30 to 10:30 p.m. Anybody here to speak on behalf of Merrimack College? I don't think, no.
Do you want?
So, do I hear a?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Merrimack College on each one of the dates that you specify, at the times that you specify. What's that?
Hear a motion made, second, hearing a second from Selectman Nobley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
You might be there for a few of those, right?
I'm there two weeks earlier. The alumni pieces have made, the graduation pieces.
Oh, that's alumni, right, okay, sorry.
So, we actually have one more item on the agenda. That's okay, normally, normally we would, but so actually.
It's only nine, 10, everyone's punchy.
On the agenda this evening is something not typically found, which is the alcoholic beverage regulations for the Town of North Andover. Want to give a shout out to our town council, who spent the past several months reviewing these and, and working to update them. I appreciate her patience working with me on this. And so, part of this is really housekeeping, certain state laws have changed, and so certain changes in here reflect those changes, for instance, service on Sundays. Some of it's just organizing it in a more practical fashion, but this is, I guess I should preface this with that what's before you on your computer or in your packet is a draft, just to start a conversation about ways that we could improve the regulations that our licensees or potential licensees see and would expect to hear from us. And so. see and would expect to hear from us. And so what's proposed before you in your packet includes where there have been edits made throughout this process. I don't remember the order of what, whether blue was first or if red was first, but ultimately this allows us to have a conversation with any potential business owners or current business owners and would allow them to come and speak before the board and talk about things that they may want to see changed from, from a practical position or residents may want to see changed. So I will, I don't know if there's a discussion or thoughts or if there's any input from my colleagues or the Town Council.
So are you talking about our public here?
So I think the next meeting, when we discussed it, was that we would allow input at that next meeting for, yes, the public, our business owners to weigh in, anybody frankly.
So is this taken up during licenses or, this would be taken up during a regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, right? This wouldn't be taken up during the licensing portion of the meeting?
It doesn't technically matter, as long as it's a consent item, because if you're going to vote the new regulations, it doesn't matter. When you make the changes or when you accept the provisions. As long as it comes under, as long as there's an understanding even under licensing, there's a vote, it's an assumption of voting under licensing anyway. So if it was placed on the agenda again under licensing, then in that case it would say discussion and vote. As long as it's clear on the agenda, there'll be a vote. And I'm not too caught up in whether it appears in consent or licensing. It's up to you guys.
And I can just add just a few things about the regulations, and one is it's mainly a reorganization of the regulations that sort of make it a little bit more user friendly, that split things up into different sections. And then the other changes are just in accordance with state law, any changes in the state law. So we haven't really changed anything in the regulations that changes any policy issues, but it's how it's administered to make it more user friendly and also just to update it.
Can I ask, so when I was elected to the board, it was a frequent trip up, and I don't think we've had this, we haven't had anybody before this new board, where portions of it are recommendations technically, like for instance, penalties for violation. Well, certain portions are pretty strictly in state law and then others fall into kind of a gray area.
So what we've done in the regulations are we've, we've put in a lot of recommendations that the board will consider. The board has discretionary authority essentially when there is a violation as to what the penalty will be. And the way it was written before, it was a little unclear as to whether those are requirements, as to this particular penalty goes with this offense. And so we've modified it to make sure that the Licensing Commission understands and also the applicants, is that if there is a violation, then there are certain factors that will be looked at in coming up with the penalties. And that those are really within the board's discretion as to where you want to have that penalty fall. And so you look at mitigating factors that might come up or whether or not it's a first or second offense. So we clarified that.
As I see, there's a lot more clarity on the special one day licensing, just sort of, it seems to be an ongoing thing.
Yes.
Which is part of the deal, right?
Right, and that is, that's in accordance with state law and the regulations, yes.
So there's no, no vote that needs to be taken by, by the board at this point. It was just more an informational opportunity and then as we, as we discuss and solicit feedback from the public at our public meetings. She's the provision section. Going collectively.
So again, so when you say at our public meeting, do you mean during a Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll have a hearing?
I anticipate, so this is a little contrary to how, at least in the package is written, so I would anticipate on June 5th, we would invite, we would invite the public to join us at our June 5th meeting to weigh in on this draft. And I think that this draft would, the members of this board would have the opportunity to weigh in on certain sections if they wanted to amend. Would they need a formal, would we need a formally vote to make those amendments, or?
Well, yes, you would formally vote to adopt the regulations as presented.
But, but if there were suggestions, for instance, if one selectman said, ah, I don't like this time, can we change it to that time? Would, we would not actually have to formally vote on those. It would be more of a.
Why wouldn't you formally, why wouldn't you vote on this?
Would we have?
I mean, as it relates to the second, unless you want to wait for the public's response, you have the document, the public will now have the document through the posting of the agenda. If you have individual feedback you want to provide to council, that can be, so that it can be incorporated as part of a change. You would do that. Ultimately, you still need to vote if it gets, you should vote the document that you want to use when you get to the, the fact that it's no longer a working product, that it's the document you want to accept. But certainly the second's comments would be incorporated and Suzanne could coordinate that and then come back with the document that has that. And if there are, if there's a citizen input that you want to incorporate that night, that can be done either on the fly or come back to another meeting where the final document's approved.
Are we comfortable with that? This is a little bit of uncharted, uncharted, it's actually very much uncharted territory for me.
I think it's a better. Setter. I think we'll, yeah, we may have others, we may have others that come after this, but I think it's a good, good place to start. And yeah, I think this is good. So we'll review this and then at our next meeting, we'll take it up under consent.
That's it on the agenda for licensing. So do I hear a motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, you're out of licensing.
Okay. We have no old business, we have no new business, public comment, no public comment. Town manager's report, so, and ask the manager.
I have two questions under ask the manager.
Okay.
That came in under an anonymous envelope, but were valid questions. One is relates to the status of our aggregation for electricity aggregation for the benefit of residents. We're moving our way through the regulatory process. We told you it would take quite a period of time. We started, I think, the week after town meeting. We're getting very close where the state would approve us being able to aggregate the electricity of our residents to provide them an opportunity to have an alternative supply that would be less expensive. I'd expect that approval will come in the next, you know, two to three months. And then there'll be a communication process by which we go out and procure the aggregation, determine if it's less expensive, and if it is, then offer it to the public. If not, wait till a future date when it would be less expensive. So there'll be more to follow on that, but we've done everything from the day after town meeting to go through a somewhat long process, and we would expect that'll be approved by the Commonwealth in the next two to three months. Second question was about the status of the Brad Street, former Brad Street School project. They're moving along. It is certainly based upon the original schedule that I think some members of the board would have seen, that behind that scheduled date, but certainly we've seen the building come out of the ground. That's a positive. We do believe that they're moving forward with some occupancy and some tenants, which is great. Ultimately, we'd love to see that wrought iron fence come down and create a little more curb appeal in between the gas line work that's going down Main Street in the next couple of weeks. But they, they're moving forward. Maybe we'd like to see them move a little faster, but we're certainly past the point in which we're worried about whether or not they're going to deliver on the product.
And what about the tenant for the second floor? Is that still?
Yeah, it sounds like it's moving forward that they have a tenant for 50% of the second floor. It sounds like that that's squared away. And that, that allowed them to get the funds released from their bank so they could proceed with the rest of the construction. Because the second floor is seen as more complicated to rent than the first floor.
And it's still not the end of it yet?
Yep.
Do we know who the tenants are going to be for the first floor yet?
No, I don't think they have tenants for the first.
I ask that question.
Yeah, me too, all the time.
Sure, everybody is. I don't blame you.
Can I mention two things? I believe I did receive a letter, I'm assuming the rest of the board saw a letter about the trash and stuff on Route 125, particularly in front of the China Blossom Restaurant. And I know that's a state road.
Oh, you mean like, like litter?
Litter and junk. Yeah, just litter. Is there any way we can put a call into?
Yes, we'll call the Commonwealth.
The prison system or whatever, who might come and pick up?
Yeah, we'll call the OT and we'll make them aware of the fact that we'd like to see a pickup. They do that once or twice a year and certainly we usually communicate if there's an excessive amount of litter.
Okay. And the second thing is that we discussed it in another meeting, well, at least I did, and I don't know if the board is in agreement, that before we have another poll petition, I, I think it would be fair warning to speak to National Grid and others to say that we would really like a resolution on the polls that are just, I mean, there's one right on Patriots Park, opposite the back door of the library. It's the most convoluted yellow thing.
It's horrible. We go by it today.
We'll play on it, but I think in, in an effort to be fair, to, you know, the industry that serves the public well, which is with electricity and lights and everything else, I think we just need to make our point clear that we are not interested, I'm not interested, I shouldn't speak for the rest of the board, in allowing other polls to come before us before they fix the ones that it's, it's bad.
You should know we regularly, first of all, we've individually gone out to that particular morass and reviewed it and taken photos. We've communicated that multiple times. So we regularly communicate between meetings, so you know, so there's not a belief that they come to the meeting and we lose sight. And we have government relations reps, we communicate with them specifically to that. Amongst others, quite frankly, it hasn't come up a lot. Double polling along Salem Street is probably in many ways the most grotesque, given the number of polls. But we get double polling now at the corner of, oh God, where do we cut the poll, Abbott? We finally, we put in the new poll, but the remaining middle of the road poll still exists, and we get a little bit of both. So we continually communicate that. I probably won't communicate that the board won't do X because I don't want to speak in that way for the board, but certainly we regularly communicate with those folks and indicate that there's real concern from the board and that it's likely to be felt when you come for, you know, for various poll petitions. So you should know that we weekly communicate a series of different issues to National Grid and we'll continue to do that so that they're aware of the concerns.
It's one, and I, it's one thing when it's on the street, and I think the public, I think, I, I think it's frustrating because you look at Middlesex, for instance, and they've always had those double polls, but it really does impact that, that public space. I mean, this is, I think, a little bit different than all of the.
Patriot Park, can you?
I'm sorry, the workaround Patriots Park, I mean.
But, but I would say this, and I'm not, I hate to say begin this with but, but listen, what we have told and we have conveyed to the board is they are aware of that and are taking the steps to do it. And it is not, even in the fastest, I'm not, and I am not letting them off the hook, I hope you know, that they're aware of that and they're going through the steps. So one company doesn't put in the pole and remove the wires. It takes three and four. And so we may be talking to one and we call the three or four, but the process, and I ain't to sound so cavalier, or sound cavalier about the fact that we get used to this bad process, but they are specifically aware of that and we regularly repeat it and they've told us, National Grids are aware of it, for us, that they all have to remove the material off the poles so that that pole, those poles can remove. That yellow thing is sort of crazy. So we'll convey it again. I just don't want you to think that we, in between meetings, don't. We do, but it's, but it's, as you know, they're not that great responsible for that stuff. Yeah, it's complicated. An update on the Merrimack Project. So this board, how many years ago was that? Three years ago? You mentioned the 114 project to the legislative delegation?
Three or four years.
It was quite a while ago. With the legislative delegations helping this board support, the state funded $1 million worth of improvements alongside the side of the Merrimack campus and alongside Royal Crest between the bypass and Elm Street. That project ended up growing to about, the college committed a million, the highway committed a million. Project ended up coming in at $2,175,000, of which both parties made up for the difference, primarily because we said we wouldn't and they were pretty good about it. Yeah, well, it's worth asking, I guess. So that included sidewalks on both sides of those roads, the signal, the hawk, the unusual hawk crossing signal. I'll leave it at that. The sidewalk on both sides of the road, also sidewalk up Elm Street to the main door of the campus. Eventually, there'll be period lighting put along the street by the campus itself, probably some flags along those poles to trade a little bit of a gateway, a college gateway. The roadway projects, which are the sidewalks and ultimately the street repaving, will begin next week. It'll take about two months to complete. Absolutely disrupt traffic. At one point, they're going to have to go on a one lane on 114. We know what that's all going to be, given the fact that it's a summer, it will be a little better. Selectmen to ecology, I'll raise the question about the impact on that neighborhood there. There certainly will be some sound when we're doing work at night, but I think the, the other options aren't particularly great. If anybody's dealt with a repaving project in the neighborhood, it's not horrible, you know, it's not great, but it's not jackhammering. Any of that kind of construction related work to raise the structures will be done during the day, but there'll be some disruption in terms of pedestrian traffic and some noise.
I know that there was previously a map distributed. I think it was before Merrimack had committed that 1 million. Is there a fresh map that shows?
Oh, absolutely.
On the residential side, as opposed to the Merrimack side, the, where the sidewalk is actually going to go.
From 510, which is the black flat top?
No, I meant like, because, because I'm thinking there's obviously quite a few residences on that side, so I assume they will be losing some.
All of them will have been communicating, we couldn't proceed with the project unless they acquired easements. So anybody that's been impacted in terms of the, in terms of the public property that appears to be maybe someone's yard, all of those residents have been contacted and will have already signed easements, otherwise the project could not have proceeded. They're not going all the way to the corner of 125 because if you may, if you're ever driving there again, it starts to really narrow as you approach that corner. And so it stops, I believe, one side street up from that corner. It affects two or three houses. Again, these were public ways where people had grassed over. Easements would have been obtained in order for them to proceed. A mast DOT would not have proceeded without those.
Okay.
So all of that communication is taking place. But we'll, we'll certainly continue to communicate it because we know there'll be a level of disruption in that area. Find alternative routes. Not too many alternative routes, I know, yeah.
I'll let you know, because I live right around the corner.
Yeah, a little further, but, but yes, find alternative routes.
So can I make a suggestion for the manager's report section?
Absolutely.
I have spent time since the last meeting really analyzing the manager reports that were provided and had a number of questions, which Tom Andrew Mailer has answered, along with some of the department heads started to answer some of those questions or took them, but I think they would probably be things that the rest of the board would be interested in, at least those of us, at least the newer members. Maybe the older members have already got this information, I don't know.
More experienced.
Sorry, sorry, seasoned members, yes, how horrible. It's getting late. More seasoned members, longtime Merrimack members.
That's right.
But I, for me, when I was looking at the data, I was, number one, needing more context and some of the questions I had were, I was wondering if it was the right information for us to be looking at. Is there something else we should be looking at to really be able to make some summary evaluations as to how we're doing in the different areas? So I wanted to perhaps propose that on a rotating basis, we actually dive into a report in a meeting rather than taking nine of them and just saying, do we have any questions on the nine reports? But, you know, each meeting maybe taking one and really getting into it and kind of trying to discuss what, what do we draw from this? Because for me, at least being a newer, less seasoned member of the board, I had a hard time drawing some conclusions from some of them. So I don't know if that's something that everyone would be interested in doing, but if we did that, I was envisioning we'd maybe set a schedule so everyone would know in advance which ones we're going to be diving into and people can be prepared with.
I think it's great too, because from our perspective, we're providing you data and I can't tell you if the data, some of the data is helpful to us, some of it is not, in fairness. And I can't tell if the data is helpful to you or not. And so whatever feedback you have on the reports we provide, that will make them better for you to use, means it'll probably be better for someone else to look at too, which is all good. So I think any kind of, I'm very, very supportive. I think if we do them one at a time and start to make changes so you get the data you want. And if there's data that's not in any of those reports, but it's something else, you know, we stand ready to provide you the information you need.
And certainly, I mean, if we, we're talking about 10 reports, that's what I'm seeing. There are some that we may be able to take together. There may be, you know, there's not so much detail in them that it might make sense to, to group a couple so we can get through them all, you know, in less than five months, so we can take a couple together and rotate them, you know, every, so we, yeah, I think that would be great. And maybe there might be some that we want to take up every time, you know, we want to talk about the opiate report every time and let's discuss the data in there. But I think there's certainly ones that we could, you know, group together and dive into those as well. It's a good suggestion. So we'll start that, not May 16th.
Bad meeting for that?
Yeah.
June 15th. Well, that's good because I think that's the next time you do to see, make it two months' worth of reports.
So which ones we want to, just, let's start at the top. Let's take the fire department report. I'm looking at the last meeting agenda where we had the reports all listed. They go in the order of fire department, opiate, police, job postings, capital project, legal, library, senior, report, and the billing department. So maybe we can take public safety next time and look at the.
There's a lot of data there, so maybe if we can, just for my benefit, if we could start with one and then based on the interaction, maybe we grow to two and.
Yeah, let's take a baby step, right?
If we take a baby step, I'd feel a little better about it.
So let's do, let's plan on taking the fire report next month and diving into that.
That's a suggestion.
Okay, so our next meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting will be May 16th prior to town meeting. Now, generally, we meet at 6:00. We really have to rush through everything to get to 7:00. I'm suggesting maybe we, if people are available, we start at 5:30, so we can comfortably get through whatever we have. I remember last year, we were kind of like, I think Mr. DeSalvo was knocking on the door saying, let's go, let's go.
We can make him wait.
So it's a suggestion. So, it's a suggestion, if we, you know, at 5:30 and we get done by 6:30, all great, we have some time, you know, we have a cookie or something. So, I mean, that would be a suggestion for the board to take, to start at 5:30 instead of 6:00, so we have a comfortable amount of time to get through, and it sounds like we may have some things to discuss that night, so, I'm offering that up as an option, if, you know, folks can make it at that time.
If all five of us can make it, that works for me.
Sure. Is that all right?
My business right now, you just never know, but...
Okay, so, 5:30, May 16th, will the room TBA?
We'll let you know when we need, there'll be TBA at this point.
All right, TBA. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.